Good evening and welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Regular Board of Education Meeting. Today is September the 20th and the time is now 5:20. I would like to first invite Mrs. Marcus to read the flags, join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Stern, will you please read the mission and vision statement?
Sure. Our mission is educational excellence. Our vision, our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite up our student Rachel Coley to read the community pledge.
Right here?
Yes, thank you.
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listening and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you very much. It's wonderful. May I have approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I will second the motion.
The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. I'd also just like to note that Mr. Halimi is not going to be with us tonight. He's not, he's not feeling well this evening. Okay, thanks. The next item on our agenda is a report from closed session.
Yes, thank you, President Wells. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the settlement agreement with employee number NG 2889689 by a vote of four to zero. Also in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the settlement agreement with OAH case 2022060867 in favor, four to zero. Also in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the settlement agreement with OAH case 2022040965 and that passes with a four to zero vote.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is our teacher-student spotlight, and we had a little preview just a minute ago. I'd like to invite up Ms. Vekatrel, our co-principal for the high school.
Thank you. I have the pleasure of introducing our national merit semifinalists this evening. But before I do that, I need to create some context about how special this really is. So listen to all of these statistics very carefully. I can't see. I should have worn my other glasses. Sorry, guys. Okay. These students entered the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in 2021. Opportunity to continue on for scholarship consideration and national merit finalist standing. To provide context to the academic excellence of these individuals, over sixteen thousand students receive national merit semifinalist standing, and that represents less than one percent of the U.S. high school seniors. And they are among the highest-scoring entrants in each state. Pretty good. Yeah? From over, well, now here's some more stats. From over sixteen thousand semifinalists, more than fifteen thousand are expected to advance to the finalist level and in February will be notified of this designation. Scholarships offered in spring of 2023 include twenty-five hundred dollars national merit scholarships, about nine hundred fifty corporate-sponsored merit scholarship awards provided by approximately a hundred and eighty corporations and business organizations. And in addition, about one hundred sixty colleges and universities are expected to finance some three thousand eight hundred college-sponsored merit scholarship awards for finalists attending sponsor institutions. So lots to look forward to and strive towards. On behalf of Beverly Hills High School and the Beverly Hills Unified School District, we congratulate these students for their outstanding academic achievement and intellect as they continue on in their pursuit of higher education, and we look forward to supporting them and celebrating their continued success. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce the following students who have received the national merit semifinalist standing among the class of 2023, and they will be the people who are completing applications with their school counselors and the college counselor, counselor for national merit finalist standing. We have Alexandra Bachian. Alexandra, stand up, stand up.
Please come up to the front. Come up to the front, please.
All the way to the front. Why don't you guys come down so you're nearby? Tell us a little bit about what your plans are. What, what are you gonna do next after school, after high school?
So first, I wanted to thank all of my teachers at Beverly for their constant support. I'm hoping to go into and explore the medical field in college, so I'm really thankful to Beverly for preparing me for that. Thank you.
And we also have Sa Yon Kim.
Hello, I'm so honored to be here tonight, and I'd also like to thank all my teachers at Beverly for helping me and shaping me to become who I am today. And in college, I hope to one day finish my degree and become a professor in the future.
And we also have Miles, Miles Kotler.
Oh, yeah. I'd also just like to thank like all of my teachers and everyone else for the support I've been given these last four years, and I'm looking forward in college just to exploring a lot of different subjects and finding what interests me.
And also Ari Goldberg. So congratulations to all of you, and we look forward to seeing what happens next.
I'm just gonna go around. So Alex, would you like to say something?
Yes, of course. This year's merit finalists have a special place in my heart because I happen to have the honor and privilege of going to school with the three students here, Alex, Miles, and Sa Yon, as well as Ari. And I've had the pleasure of being in several classes with these four students, and they are some of the most intellectual, smart, hard-working, and deserving people I've ever met, and I think you guys deserve this so much, and I'm so proud of you.
Well, I wanna congratulate the four winners. I only see three, but I'm sure the other one will be just as happy about it. But I want to also mention that I had the privilege of knowing two of these students at Hawthorne, and I'm so thrilled to see them. I'm so proud of you, of course, of all of you, and I wish you all the best of luck in your future endeavors and wherever you wanna go and whatever scholarship I know you'll get, I hope that you go there, because I'm pulling for you.
A hearty congratulations to the four students, and I just wanted to point out to some of our viewers that the way this was measured was by their willingness to take some of those less-than-popular standardized tests. But these students took these tests, and it is, it actually is a metric that shows us how well they can read, how well they can write, and math as well, and it really is no easy feat. But I'm so glad that you guys succeeded because it sounds like, you know, you're gonna have a lot of easy access to certain colleges of your choice, and there are scholarships, and there are corporations that work with these testing companies that will put money towards scholarships for you, as you know. So congratulations.
I'll ditto my colleagues and won't take any more time. Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations to all four of you. I am very proud of you. I'm very proud of our teachers as well and our parents. It takes, it takes a community, and I'm just really thankful to everybody who participated in your education, but especially you for your hard work, and I wish you the best of luck.
Also, congratulations. You know, I'm really glad that you mentioned your teachers. The magic happens in the classroom. And so thank you for doing that, because it's been a long road to get to where you are today. A lot of teachers, a lot of schools involved. So I really appreciate that you are giving back and thanking your teachers, and also to your parents as well, because you're coming from homes that support our educational system, that support you, and good luck as you continue on.
Next, I'd like to invite up Mr. Smith.
Well, we are here tonight. We're the Magical Choir, and this past weekend, we went to Idlewild for our annual retreat, and we're here to give you a little report on the retreat and what we do up there, and so I'm going to turn this over to Rachel, Isabella, and Hayden, and they're gonna tell you all about it.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rachel Coley, and I am a senior here at Beverly Hills High School, and I am this year's vocal music program president.
I'm Isabella Painter. I'm a senior, and I am this year's treasurer.
Hi, I'm Hayden Radonsky. I'm a junior, and I'm this year's vice president.
Just to give a little context, this past weekend, the Beverly Hills High School Magical Singers, which I'm sure a lot of you know and have heard perform, went up to our annual Idlewild Retreat. So why do we go? The Magical Singers have been going to Idlewild for years to train and teach the new students for caroling season. So, caroling season is a really awesome thing that our Magicals do. We go across Beverly Hills, and we are paid to carol. Here is a photo of us caroling last year at the Beverly Whisher Hotel. It's really an honor, and it's a great way for us to reach out in the community, and a lot of past Magicals end up singing with us, so I know you're all out there.
So here are some pics, pictures from our recent Idlewild trip on the bus ride. And here are, is the whole program. We're all in our new Magical's merch, which basically we made, the students, us made, in the span of three weeks after school started, and...
Very nice.
And Magical's utilized this weekend to rehearse all of our carols and winter concert music for our upcoming performances and caroling gigs while also bonding and making such great connections with each other.
We bonded over meal times and got to know each other in preparation for our hours of work this season and this year. It's a tradition for students to lead the Friday night Shabbat service for all the Magical's. This year, some of my friends and I, we sang songs, we did prayers, and we had lots of challah and grape juice. And we spent our evenings bonding by telling stories, making smores, having skip competitions, singing by campfire, and performing carols for other schools. This weekend really turned Magical's into a family.
So, we showed you what we did this weekend. What's in store for the rest of the year? The vocal music program is just getting started. We got a year full of performance ready for you guys, and we, we hope you make it. Including, coming up, we'll be performing for the Thanksgiving luncheon for the Beverly Hills High School staff. All throughout December, we'll be on caroling gigs. We're gonna send out information soon. We highly... It's a really fun time. It's a way to have students. It's a great deal, and we'll, we add to a lot of your, you know, your little parties and such. This December, we're also going to have a new Carols in Coco set up, so if you can't make it or you can't hire us for a caroling gig, come to see us carol at the show. And then December ninth is our vocal music program winter concert. So that is when we will have all the students, not just the Magical's, and that's a great time. We're gonna have our other choirs, the concert choir, the minute singers, and it's really so beautiful. It's gonna be at the Lutheran Church of the Masters, so be sure to make it. We also have some things coming up next semester. The whole vocal music program is so honored and excited to go to the Disneyland Recording Studio Session. That's a really fun event, and we get a little bit of a practical usage of how music applies to real-life jobs and whatnot. And then we have our Magical's acapella showcase that'll be at Beverly Vista Middle School in March. And then we have our spring concert at the end of the year. So we have a lot coming up, and we're so grateful for you guys and so grateful for everyone that's gonna come see us soon. Thank you so much. And that's our little picture of the Magical Choir.
Alex, you wanna add anything?
Thank you so much. For your report for all your goals and your plans for this year, and I really admire how you use this vocal music camp to not only enhance and develop the program, but to like bond with each other, because I think that's a very important part of being a team. So, thank you.
Mrs. Marcus?
I just loved that presentation. Thank you so much. That was really, and I, you know what I hope? I hope it inspires and people will watch it and maybe take an interest in coming out and being in the Magical's and in the music programs and building that pathway, because that's the way it gets to be. So, congratulations. I loved your presentation, your enthusiasm, and have a great year.
I'm so thrilled to know that you're hirable in December. Keep that in mind. Are there board member discounts? That's okay. There doesn't have to be. But anyway, very exciting.
That's illegal.
All I can say is, learning Christmas carols during a Shabbat campfire has to be, has to be the epitome of diversity, right?
I agree. I would, I loved your presentation. It's fantastic, and the enthusiasm, and I, I agree with Alex. I love that you made it a bonding experience and, and shared that with us. It really came across in your presentation. I'd add one last thing, and I'm hoping this is true, but we have our organizational meeting in December, and we hopefully will have the Magical's performing.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we'll add that to your calendar.
We're always there.
Love that.
Terrific.
And you, you always have such a rigorous schedule. I mean, you're everywhere, and you know, I often sometimes worry about the pace, but so many people wanna have you at your events and can't wait to, to see the lineup. So thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next item is our BHUSD Community Spotlight, and this month is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And so tonight, we're highlighting Not Today Cancer. This Sunday, we will gather as a community to honor and celebrate the life of BHUSD student Duncan Book. In November of 2020, Mason Duncan Book, sorry. Mason was in fifth grade at Horace Mann Elementary, and he tragically passed away from leukemia. Our community came together and did what it does best. BHUSD exemplified the values of our community pledge, particularly acting with integrity and respect. We are honored to raise money for and support Jen Duncan and Stacy Book and their nonprofit organization Not Today Cancer this Sunday. So please join me in welcoming Jen, and she will share her story and share some more about Duncan and their Not Today cancer cause. And thank you so much for being here, Jen.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mary. And Mandy, thank you for sporting the hat. It looks great on you. Hi, guys. My name's Jen Duncan. A lot of you also know me as JJ. I answer to both. J stands for Jennifer. I answered all three. Yes, thank you for talking about Mason a little bit and bringing up National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. It is, it's, I see a lot of faces that I know and love. Sorry, I wasn't gonna do this. Faces that I know and love here in this room, and what I wanna talk about tonight is our story, yes, but really what I learned as a mom who was a cancer mom and who is a mom who now walks a path of grief because of the horrible disease that is cancer. Front of Beverly Vista, and everybody was out celebrating that weekend, and Mason was riding the rides with his friends, begging me for more tickets, and he was doing just fine. He woke up Monday morning and had swollen lips, swollen eyes, and we were like, what are you allergic to? And he didn't know. He said he smelled a flower he had never smelled before. That was the only thing he could think of, because he had all the same food, no new detergents, nothing. He, that's what his answer was. As we sat at breakfast, the swelling went down, and I said, all right, well, let's, I gave him like a junior Claritin, and we called Ms. McGregor at the school and said, just know, he's maybe had an allergic reaction of some sort. And anyway, he seemed to do fine that day, and Tracy was wonderful about keeping us updated. The next day, he woke up once again with the swollen face. The long and short of it is, is we ended up, we ended up, sorry, my people are calling me suddenly. We ended up going to CHLA that following Tuesday, and Stacy and I were led, after many, many tests, down a long hall, on the walk, the longest walk of my life, longer than this 5K will be this weekend. And we were surrounded by a team of people in white coats who brought out a, a monitor with an X-ray of his chest, where we saw a slushy mass wrapped around his heart and trachea and lungs, and we were told our son had cancer. And I had a doctor look me right in the eyes, and he said, your life just changed. And I, it did. Our lives changed from that point on, and we became a cancer family and a patient at CHLA. Or Mason was a patient at CHLA. And, you know, what I've come to learn, the long and short of it is, Mason battled for about eight months on that first regimen. He went into remission and seemed to be doing well. We were on a maintenance program when just a year later, he relapsed. It was, the relapse was terrible. He was getting sicker and sicker, and the cancer was getting stronger and stronger, and he passed away about six months after that relapse. They gave Mason the same cancer chemotherapy that they would have given me had I been diagnosed when I was his age. Cancer research is, for children, is terribly, terribly behind. The funding is terribly, terribly low. Pediatric cancer gets four percent of funding from the National Cancer Institute. Children's bodies are not little adult bodies. Children's bodies are different. These, these, these kids are needing different types of treatment, and treatments that aren't so harsh. To the young woman who said, you're going into the medical field, I'm gonna throw my vote in the ring for pediatric oncology research, just saying. And the reason I say that too is this, it, the science is actually very close. We actually went to a clinical trial in Houston where we saw firsthand how close the science is. There's a, there are immunotherapy treatments. There are treatments that we're using our own body to fight against cancer that isn't just injecting a little body with tons of poison, tons of tons of poison. Had Mason lived, the rest of his life would have been changed. He had lost the ability to walk, not only losing his hair. He had lost the ability to walk. Many children go deaf. Many children have health issues, and secondary cancer rates go up by like seventy-five percent when you've been through that level of chemotherapy. His life would have been cut short at some point. The STAR Act, many of you have heard about, that came into play about four years ago, stands for Survivorship, Treatment, Access, and Research. It's, sounds wonderful. It's a fifty million dollar grant from the government. Fifty million dollars can be paid by one cancer child in about a year. $50 million can be paid by one cancer child in about a year, about a year and a half. You guys know what, what medical bills end up being in this day and age. $50 million for an entire cancer program. There's a lot of celebration behind that and I'm absolutely willing to take that 50 million. But this, this research needs help. It needs the help of mom and pop organizations, things like Stacy and I started with Not Today Cancer. The, the Leukemia Lymphoma Society has the Dare to Dream, uh, group that I'm also a part of and I do advocacy work with. We work with other pediatric cancer groups so that we can raise money and awareness about this issue. But I want to get to what I said I was going to talk about, which is what I learned during all of this. Now, the obvious thing would be when you go through something like this, you learn what's important. You learn perspective, right? I think that's probably pretty clear to you guys that I've learned that lesson. Yes, I do know it's important. That said, you know, it's still, you go through life, things happen. I have a stressful job. I can get stressed at work. So while I learned about perspective, I wanted to dig deeper when I talked to you tonight to really tell you more about what I learned. And it involves a story, uh, that happened with Mason and also my daughter Madeline. Towards the end of Mason's life, he was getting sicker and sicker and he was becoming more and more depressed, having to go to the hospital all the time. At this point, he was 10 years old and then soon turned 11. He passed away about two months after his 11th birthday. He celebrated two birthdays as a cancer patient. And he said to me one day in deep despair, he said, mama, I'm so tired of this. When is this going to end? And you know, when you're a parent and you're in a moment like that with your child and you don't have the answer because you also want to know the same thing? Something happens and you can reach into some deeper knowledge than you even knew you had. And that deep mom part of me reached into some ancient knowledge and pulled out the words that I said to him, which was, honey, there's a, there's an old proverb, belief, saying in just about every culture you dip your toe into. And it's called the wheel of life. In Tibetan Buddhism, they talk about the wheel of life. In Hindu and Sanskrit, they talked about the wheel of life. In medieval Europe, we talked about the wheel of life, the wheel of fortune. And what that message says is that the wheel turns. Sometimes we're on a dark, dark side of the wheel. And if we hold on, the wheel will turn and we will end up on a lighter side of whatever we're dealing with, whatever it is. We're taught this in nature. We're taught this by the way our planet turns. We're taught this in our own lives. We're taught this in history. The wheel turns. And the thing is, is as I said it to Mason, I didn't know that I meant that he would live. Cause I could see the writing on the wall at about that point. But what I knew the bigger, larger truth was, was that the wheel would turn and in some way, in some form, in some fashion, he wouldn't be in the level of pain he was. And the wheel turned and I do think, I really, with all my heart belief, he's in a place now where he doesn't have that pain. Whatever your beliefs are, he doesn't have that pain and the wheel turned for him. And around that same time, my daughter Madeline, who was eight years old at the time her big brother passed away. And she's now 10 and she's a fifth grader, the same age, same grade he was in when he, he passed away. She's a fifth grader at Horace Mann, but at the time she was eight. And she was such a good kid during his whole illness. She was the little sister. She was the healthy one. And of course, that's the child that you say, honey, I'm sorry, we've got to take your brother to chemotherapy. I'm sorry, he's having cravings because of the steroids and he wants this. Can you eat this for dinner tonight? I'm sorry, not right now. I've got to go give him his meds. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And she never once complained ever for two years until one day at the very end. Maybe a month before he died, she just collapsed on her floor in her bedroom. He was at the hospital. Everything just felt dark in our house. It was a tough, tough time. And she said, mama, why is everything so different than it used to be? Why? And I said, honey, I don't know. But let me tell you about a wheel. And she kind of looked at me and I said, things change and right now we're in a dark time. And Madeline, if any of you remember Mason, those of you who know Mason, you know, he was verbal and could talk and he would be up here singing and talking with, performing. And, uh, Madeline is a little quieter. Madeline is also quite a performer and, and getting a little sassier as she gets older. But she's not one to dis, to describe her emotions like that. And so she looked at me with this wheel turning thing. And she cocked her head and sort of stared and all of a sudden I remember, you know, Madeline's an artist. She's an artist. And I said, how about we draw a picture of how we feel right now? And I brought these pictures tonight. I want to show you. I want to show you these. Pardon, it's not great framing because I put these in like cheap frames. I need to do it. But I said, baby, I want you to draw a picture of how our family and how our life feels right now in the middle of all this cancer and ick. Tell me what it feels like. And she drew this. And you can see swirls and dark colors, looks like rain. And we talked about it. I said, this looks to me like rain and I see all these swirls of chaos and all sorts of stuff going on that we can't control, right? And it feels blue and it makes me kind of sad. And she nodded. And I said, okay. I said, now we're going to do another picture and I want you to draw me a picture of what it looks like when our wheel turns. And she drew. Sorry, it's crooked in here. She drew this. The circles have opened up. There are stars everywhere. There's brightness and there's happiness in this picture to me. In doing this, it's helped me learn that yes, I am in grief and I will be in grief for the rest of my life. Grief doesn't get easier. You get stronger and better at holding it. And the wheel turns. And I am grateful that my son is not in pain anymore, even though personally I'd rather have him here. And what I want to say to you about that, when it comes to how far behind pediatric oncology is right now, is that I believe that wheel will turn. I really, really believe that wheel is turning. Mason's wheel was small. He lived to be 11 years old. It's a small wheel. We each have a wheel. We have big ones and little ones and we have our personal life wheel. Your wheel will turn if you're in a dark place. If you're in a good place, your wheel will turn and you will be in a dark place at some point. With cancer, with pediatric cancer specifically, there are so many people out there working, not for the glory and certainly not for the money, but they are working to save children like Mason. Mason received a letter from the doctor from Texas Children's Hospital and Baylor College of Medicine that explained how much his cells actually taught them. For those of you that are good in science, you know that often in, uh, science, not often, but in science experiments, we learn more from the failures than we do the successes, right? So Mason helped generations of children by a failed clinical trial. And Stacy and I see it as our mission to continue his work and to continue to lend to science so that we don't lose other kids. So that when they'll, their wheels turn, their wheels turn towards life and light and survivorship rates that don't include secondary cancers and all the illnesses that come with current treatments. So yes, we are having a five K this weekend that I know a lot of you have heard about. If you are able to participate, come participate. I've got flyers up here. If you are not able to participate in the race, but you want to help, I need volunteers. So I'd love to point you in the direction of how to volunteer. We'd love some clubs or anything to come out because the rate, if those of you who came last year, we know we just ran circles around Roxbury. This year we have a lot of people, so we're actually starting at Roxbury, but we're running up into the neighborhoods. Uh, Beverly Hills PD is escorting us and helping close the streets or close the, the stoplights so we can cross streets safely and so forth. And we're going to run by Beverly Vista. We're going to run by the high school and I'm going to need some, some people out there. We have a few, but who are going to help point the direction so nobody goes running off the wrong way. So I'd love to, uh, to have you guys out there to help with that. But what this does is Mason's little wheel, our personal little wheels, cancer, child, childhood cancer is a big wheel. And it's going to take a whole lot of us to pull that wheel, to turn it. And I invite you to come help us turn the wheel, save other children like Mason. And I want to thank all of you for providing a community that held my family and continues to hold my family through the darkest time I've ever, ever imagined. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jen. I, I appreciate so much how well you articulated your experience and shared with us, uh, your experience and your learning. I really, I'm, I'm really touched by it and I really appreciate, um, you coming here today and sharing that with all of us. Um, I'd, I'd like to give everybody a chance to say something, but it just really, I mean, it, it's just really fantastic to hear how you've just tapped into your intuition and, and found your way to, to lead your, your family through this. And it's really inspirational. And I know, like you said, everybody's had some form of, uh, an experience like this that, you know, at different levels. And it's just so important to be able to share that with other people and, because there's learning for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Jen, for sharing your story and Mason's story. And as a student who had the privilege of meeting Mason and the rest of your family when I was very, very young, I just have to say that as a student, um, I know that we will forever carry on Mason's spirit and, um, you know, the smile and joy he brought to so many people's lives, um, from administrators to other students to really everyone in the district, even when, even now. And, um, we will continue to honor him and remember him, um, for that. And not just through, um, the run that we're doing, but also, you know, I think a lot of students, um, like Alex here, who, you know, wants to pursue a career in, in medicine. We have so many students here at the high school especially who want to pursue those careers in science and medicine. We have a medical science academy and I think Mason's story can really help inspire a lot of students to after high school, pursue careers in that field and contribute to cancer, childhood cancer research and hopefully improve the field and improve, you know, um, the future of, of, of finding a cure so that there, so that children like Mason in the future don't have to face the same fate and that there can be, you know, hope for these children. So thank you so much.
Good evening. I just want to tell you that hearing this story, I could hear it over and over again. It's very, very inspirational and I want to thank you for sharing it. I feel that we have somewhat of a connection, though you may not know it. Because my nephew is the head of the pediatric, pediatric oncology institute at Georgetown University studying pediatric cancers. So I feel very attached to you. And I just want to know that I was there last year. I will be there again this year. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you so much, Jen. I want to thank you and your family and I, and also Mason for the, the gifts that are continued to be given. I mean, just your, what you had to share, as painful as it was, uh, gave me some insight and some lessons I never thought of that I will always think of, including the image of the wheel. And I, I, it absolutely resonates with me. Um, so I thank you for the gifts and, and the growth and the tremendous learning that you and your family have continued to do and will continue to do. And we love you. Okay.
Um, thank you for sharing. Um, I, I first met Mason, I was involved in the Taste of Broadway program, helping out Jenny on percussion. And during, there would be rehearsals and they would talk about this kid Mason and he's not here today and now Mason's not coming today or he's coming. And if, you know, a few rehearsals down the road, Mason came from the hospital that day. And I was sitting next to the piano player Lloyd and I watched this kid. Basically probably just at that point came out of the bed, got driven over there, probably headed back to bed right afterwards. And to me, that was the epitome of strength and courage that I had ever seen in my life. And I take that moment, that one moment in time, and he had come to several rehearsals and eventually did come and do the show, which was miraculous. Um, and I take that snapshot of that first time that he came as a reminder of a couple of things to keep my own life in perspective, to know how fortunate I am to embrace my own children and my family. And to appreciate that vision of strength that he shared, that I carry with me to this day in everything that I do. And to remind me that you can keep going, you can be stronger in anything that you try to do. So thank for that. Um, I also, I am unfortunately not going to be in town for the run, but I did sign up for the run. You don't have to run to sign up, everybody. Just remember that. If you can't run, bad knees, whatever, still sign up. You don't have to run. But I did find a run, a five K, the same morning where I'm going to be in Corvallis, Oregon, and I'm going to run that one in his honor.
You know, it was at that same performance, Mr. Margot. And, um, you know, it, I hadn't met Mason until after the show. Um, and just what a spectacular young man. But I have to say, what a highlight it has been just this year, just meeting you and Stacy and just how friendly and approachable and your willingness to just share your story. And, um, and thank you for that. Um, you know, I'm looking forward to getting to know you better. Um, and I can't wait to see you on Sunday.
Can I just say one more word about something you talked about? I'm going to be talking about community service in a little while. And I want to share with you that this is an opportunity for the children of this district to get some community service by coming out and helping direct the traffic during the run. So I'm begging children who are listening or parents to have their children come out and get some community service. I will personally be there. I will sign their purse, their ticket, so.
Thank you. Thank you again, Jen. I really appreciate it. And, uh, we'll see everybody on Saturday. Thank you. I mean, Sunday. Great, everyone's going to show up on Saturday. I, I love that the city's, um, that this has been growing and that the city is, is behind this as well. And I think it's, it is, it's a great community event for a really, uh, really meaningful cause. So thank you for bringing our community together as well. Thanks.
I think the cross country team should get out there and run it too, Tim. I know they used to do the Setion Run. I used to see the cross country team at the Setion Run, so.
Okay, uh, may I have an approval for the consent calendar, please?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar minus items E and I.
I will second that.
All right, the motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden.
I'll make a motion to approve item E, the ratification of professional consulting services agreement with King Consulting.
I, I brought that to the attention of the board.
Do you want a second?
Oh, second.
Second? Motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. And I'll have Raphael come up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, and, uh, good evening, President Wells, members of the board, um, and members of our community, Dr. Bregge, cabinet, thank you all so much. Uh, item 11E is the approval of ratification for the professional consulting services, uh, with King Consulting. Um, essentially they will be helping us with, uh, filing, uh, modernization eligibility, uh, for the district. Um, they'll be looking at how much modernization eligibility the district has, as well as new construction eligibility. So, um, that is what the, uh, contract is, uh, would call for. Uh, King, um, also has helped the district in the past with the developer fee justification study, as well as, um, other reports like the demographic study that the district has done in the past. So it's a familiar vendor. Um, we just want to make sure that with the new state bonds that exist, that we're able to get in line for those. Because that's how it kind of works. Like you, for some of these, i- if you don't get in line, then you're not going to reach the appropriation, uh, round. So we want to make sure we get in line as quickly as we can. So that's why we need, uh, you, uh, someone that can help us with the modernization eligibility.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Marcus, you had a question on that?
Yes, the only thing that I wanted to point out was that, um, if you total up the number of, I've read the contract and so on, and, uh, they're charging a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour, and they're listing the approximate number of hours that they can charge. They're charging, it goes up to about four hundred and thirty hours of possible work. And yet, if you multiply that by a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour, that's almost eight, eighty thousand dollars. So I just wanna point out that we are asking for a bill of up to thirty-five thousand dollars on the, uh, approval. And yet, there's a possibility that it could be more depending, because, uh, so we're, we're, we may have to come back for more, it looks like, at another time.
So I, I did double-check with, uh, King Consulting. Uh, I, I actually emailed them, um, uh, before we actually put this on the agenda. And I asked that same question. Uh, you know, they, this is kind of their standard, uh, prototypical offering in, in their contracts, you know, this number of like, these are estimates, number of hours of estimates. But I asked her, like, you know, where do you feel we, what do you feel we would need actually as the district? You've already looked at our data, you've already looked at a lot of our, uh, information. And so she estimated somewhere between a hundred and fifty to about maybe a hundred and ninety hours. So when we calculated it out, we just, we averaged it up to about thirty-five thousand. Um, and so we do feel that that's going to be pretty reasonable. That's what she emailed to me as well. Um, and I do think that that's, that's going to be in line. We'll make sure we, we keep track of it. If for some reason, um, there are more programs that the district can, can qualify for and that can apply for, we might have to come back, but then that'll be good news because there's a new program that we're applying for. So, um, that's, that's something that we'll, we'll keep definitely in perspective. And, um, it's also a monthly bill, so we'll be able to track it, um, on a monthly basis to make sure we don't exceed the not-to-exceed amount of, of the thirty-five thousand.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I just wanted to make aware that, that, that the numbers didn't seem to connect for me. And I was asking that question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Um, the next item on our agenda is I, is that correct?
Yeah.
I will move for the approval of addendum item to BHGF naming opportunities.
I'll second.
Uh, okay. Any, do you wanna discuss?
I, I would like to know, um, I'm concerned about, uh, how these naming opportunities came about. I, I've been on the board now for almost four years and I, there may have been one, but I don't recall. And who sets the price for them? And, uh, and, um, whether there's uh, other opportunity to get more money than that amount of money? How does that money set? And so on. And, uh, I just was wondering uh, how BHGF was also involved in that.
Sure, I can, uh, share a little bit with you. Um, just about every year, usually in the summer, um, our school site administrators, uh, will walk around with some of our BHGF, um, uh, board members. And we, we look for those, uh, opportunities for, for naming, uh, uh, just these opportunities uh, for funding and for just the fundraising overall. Um, we, we really look at what's been done in the past. And, and along the way, as we're walking around campuses, we're, we're also making sure that everything is kind of, uh, kept up, um, over the years with some of the other naming rights. We do look at what was spent before. Um, benches, for example, are on the agenda for this evening. And so we will look at the price of other benches. Sometimes, um, you know, we're now talking about the high school with the new construction. So we have benches that, uh, these are a little bit larger. Um, these are kind of in a sectional, uh, area. So somebody could, uh, potentially, um, you know, buy the naming rights to the whole section. Um, and there are some, uh, larger benches by B1, B2. Um, and so we've kind of changed the price depending on how large the item is. This is, we look at just how long, how wide the, uh, these benches are. But it's not just benches, it's trees and it's, um, it's rooms. Um, and we really go based on what has been done before. And really, what will sell. Um, you know, and there's a lot of discussion about, um, you know, the, the quality, the sign, keeping it up. Um, and that goes back and forth with BHGF. And then, um, once that's decided and that comes to the board for approval for naming rights, um, then a contract is put together by BHGF. And then that contract also comes back to the board for approval.
Well, my question is, is that I've noticed the benches were what, three hundred, three thousand some odd dollars? What if someone, they give more? I mean, is there a chance to have sort of a bidding process? Or no, you don't do that? Is that?
Well, I mean, w- we also look to see what has been sold before. So, um, and I think that BHGF does a, a good job of, uh, getting an understanding of what is going to be a naming right and what, what isn't. Um, you know, they're starting to do a lot more marketing, uh, with some of the, with the new construction, the new benches, and it's a pretty nice area. So, um, you know, it's kind of getting that word out there that, um, that that's available. And, uh, you know, and it's something that we do throughout the year. So it's been a while since there's been, but with the new construction, that, that came up. Um, uh, but I think that there's going to be other new naming opportunities as well. I mean, there's some unnamed fields and classrooms. And, um, and sometimes it just, uh, it, it just takes somebody to ask, like this area, this music room, or this area of a campus before they look into it. And, uh, BHGF is really good partners with us and they'll meet with our site administration, um, to, to have those conversations.
I guess a question I have is, you know, because we're working on the schools and, you know, we, we do have plans to finish school and, and we have El Rodeo and, and down the road. Uh, I'd like to know from a, from a broader perspective of what are those naming rights? And, and how does this compare to other naming rights we have in Beverly Hills and other areas? Because I know, for example, the Wallace does it there. And there's, there's other areas throughout the city where we have naming that's happening. And how does that compare within our city? Because it is Beverly Hills and it is our school. We've invested a lot in the schools and moving forward. And so, I, I think a, a more comprehensive overview of what the naming market looks like, for lack of a better word, I think, and looking at our future so that these things are, it feels a little, um, you know, like, a, a little hodgepodge instead of looking at the, the whole global, uh, picture of what that could be so that we can really maximize that. And then maybe you do go out and you market, um, what those naming rights are, instead of waiting for someone to come up and, and suggest something. And then we can have, we can, um, we can market it at a, I mean, it's, it's a very, it's a nice thing to have, but it, it feels low to me, to be honest.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with, uh, Mrs. Wells. I think we've, we've revisited these in the past, um, for a long time. And, and I always felt there was this question about, you know, what the market demands, what we can charge, and then what we think we're worth. As far as those naming rights. And, um, they always had brought up the fact that, there were people who spoke on, on this issue brought up, well, people aren't lining up to donate for the, for this particular, whatever it was, bench or tree, whatever it was. Um, so we really, we have to price it somewhere where we can get somebody interested in doing it. But I think sometimes we're underselling ourselves when we do that. Um, and, and, and I think it just, it takes a, it should take a deeper dive into this and not be so, it seems to, or in the past, it's been very arbitrary. The prices have been very arbitrarily chosen without really, really studying what's, what's going on out there. Um, and, and I think if we understood what, what does a bench cost at, you know, USC? What does a bench cost to UCLA? What are, what are the going rates for things like this? No, are we those campuses? No, we're not. But when we're done, we'll be, it'll be a very attractive campus to have a naming right on. Hard to see that at the moment, but it will be.
Right.
So I, I would, I would like to kind of roll this back and kind of reexamine. Plus, the other prices for things around the district were set a long time ago. And it doesn't take under account any, you know, escalation and flay, whatever. It's just they set these prices, you know, before things started really going up. So, I, I would be in favor in taking a deeper dive into some of these, um, and looking at if we're, and, and they may be right, but there's not enough evidence in the attachment to show us how we got to these numbers. And if they are in fact, you know, what, what we should be selling stuff for.
Uh, can I also chime in here? Do we have at the present time naming opportunities that have been gone, that haven't been, you know, taken yet? Are there other, other opportunities in the district?
There are.
That's what, uh.
There, there are. But any, any advice as far as, you know, co- you know, comparable areas? You know, I'm, I'm sure that, um, BHGF and our administration would be happy to, to, to look to see, you know, the comparables out there. It's, it's, it's really, it's, it's, it's really hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison.
Right. I think also, it also ties to whether you have a campaign, because that gives people an incentive to donate. So it's a vehicle for donating. But if it just stands by itself, it, it doesn't have, uh, you know, an incentive or, uh, that purpose around it, which I know that, um, you can have some big things where that can be the case if you're working with a big donor and you may be looking at something specific that you're gonna develop. But on the whole, I would think that naming campaigns, um, probably are most successful when you're doing a big funding campaign. And then you're giving people different options and you're putting a timeline around it. And you're building, uh, momentum for funding so that it gives people that incentive to, to write that check. So that's when I think you can, you can get the most out of that. And I, I'm curious to see, um, you know, what the other things are in our areas. Cause I mean, look at the Wallace. They have so many naming things that they did when they developed that. And, and they continue to do that there as well. That's just one small example.
I was gonna add, in the past, sometimes what, what we've done is if we haven't been able to come to a consensus on the donation amount, is we accept the opportunities. The board has accepted the opportunities and then they let the foundation continue to shop those around, bringing back a, a, a suggested price that is not locked in. So then given the board the opportunity to kind of say yea or nay on that. I don't know if that's something this board is interested in, but at least we can say, yes, we recognize these objects can join the list of what you can ask for. But let's hold off on naming a price just yet until we really understand. Um, and this has been going on for many, many years. So this is not.
I think I've remembered.
Yeah, this is not, this is nothing new and it's not. And, and I know that in the past, we have tried to kind of hammer it down and get a comprehensive list. But that was a long time ago. So I think that needs to be revisited.
Right. I, it's, it's, it just sounds like it needs more of a strategy behind it. So is it, are they one-offs? Or do you save them and do a campaign? Or, you know, every year, do you reevaluate them?
There should be a comprehensive menu.
Yeah.
People get to choose from.
And then when do you wanna make them available? Cause then you could shut down, like, things in that way as well. So I think you have a lot of different opportunities. So, uh, I, do you suggest we table this or?
Um.
Or, or amend?
I made the motion. I would be willing to withdraw the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we table?
Well, let's.
First, uh, you make your motion to withdraw.
Did I, did I second?
I think.
Did I second originally?
You second.
Yeah, then I, I accept the withdrawal right now.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Not yet.
I'm gonna make a motion.
We had to do that first.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, and then all those in favor?
We, before we vote, um, I see Farrah's here. So I just wanted to ask her one question about this, if that's okay?
Yeah. I came specifically for this anyway, cause I figured there would be questions. So, hello.
So, hi, um, is there a time constraint on this, um, in the, in the sense of, do you have people committed to these particular objects at the moment?
We have one person committed to the large benches in the B1, B2 courtyard. Um, and the reason it's piecemeal is because it, unfortunately, has been done piecemeal in the past. Not saying that that is the way we would like to proceed. It's just, this is the, this is the way that we have done it previously. It was before my time, so I'm just following that protocol. Um, so yes, it is just getting the, um, you know, the, the ability to name the object. And then we come back with a contract for said object. And yes, the, the, the amount could change if, if we decide so. Um, but this is, yes, this is totally going off of previous, how the, how the board and how the BHGF president did it previously. Um, yes.
Okay, um, if we table this tonight,
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't wanna discourage people from supporting the foundation. So that's why I brought you up here. So, are, are we, are?
I think we could be okay. We can table it. Um, I might work with the district office if it's okay in terms of potentially when we bring it back, hopefully next, next board meeting. Um, that we could also, um, possibly address the contract that's in question as well. So approve the bench and then also approve the contract to name the bench. At the same, same meeting.
That, that would, that would assume that we're all in agreement on the price at that point.
Right. And the strategy.
Right.
Right, right.
Uh, that, that's why I would, I would suggest, I mean, you know, kind of going back. And I think when I first started in the district, I do remember there was a naming right, um, authorization by the board. Um, and then a price. I do remember that when I first started. Um, because there is a donor, I mean, in, in, you know, to have to do both at the same meeting probably isn't something that we normally do.
Right.
So, uh, you know, I would suggest, I mean, it's, these are really nice benches in a kind of a courtyard area. I mean,
It's the only benches in that courtyard.
And these are going to be.
There's actually three other benches.
But I mean, that's the only, like.
Right.
And then there's a smaller courtyard.
We know it's a, it's a really, really good naming opportunity.
Opportunity, right.
So that's what I would recommend to at least.
Table it.
Well, I, I would recommend just, you know, getting the approval for just this naming opportunity and then.
Right, price not attached. So we could do that.
Right, that's why I brought that up earlier, that we can just approve these as naming opportunities, price to be determined.
Exactly.
So what we would do is, is, um, instead of the motion you made, Mary, we bring back this mo- motion, amend this with removal of the donation amounts. And just to have the, and that, that gives the BHGF the, at least the approval to shop those particular naming rights.
Yeah, that could work.
So you'd like to amend this?
I'd like to amend the motion instead of tableing it.
Can I just ask one question first?
Sure.
You already have supposedly one person who has committed to that price, though. Is that correct?
Uh, they have not committed to that price, but they're interested in the bench itself.
Okay, they haven't, they have, you have not made it.
No, it's a, it's a memorial bench. So yes. Yeah, no, the price is not, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so I would, I'm in favor of, uh, amending this, um, item and approving the item as a some, an item that could be named?
Yeah.
Without a price?
So, since you made the motion to table, let's withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Did I second that too, Pam? Do you accept? She's withdrawing the motion to table.
Yes, I, I seconded that motion.
No, do you, do you accept her withdrawal?
Oh, she's now withdrawing?
Yes.
And we'll amend it, uh, approving that bench as a item to be named, but not approving the price? I'm gonna withdraw and then I'm going to amend.
Have a new motion.
Yes.
Alright, I will accept the withdrawal.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Well, you withdrew. You don't have to vote on it.
Now, I'm going to make a motion to amend without the price.
I'll second that.
There we go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Okay, we've got the naming taken care of. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent report.
Thank you and good evening again. Um, we are just so excited to be able to stand here in front of you today. So many hours have been put, uh, into our strategic plan work. Um, and if you just think about how quickly the year has gone by, you know, we started off with opening day and we started to talk about our strategic planning. And then we, uh, had our community pledge meeting. And again, we renewed and refreshed our vision and our mission. And, uh, we've also laid the foundation now for a new strategic plan. And it is all about education, educational excellence. We've met multiple times, as you know. Um, we've met with our Board of Education, with our leadership team, um, at a conference before the school year started. Um, and I've, I've brought up before that it's kind of an unusual, um, e- experience to have this type of working relationship, uh, between Cabinet, Leadership Team, and our school board. And so, we're very excited about that. This is a very, uh, different kind of strategic plan. Um, we are building off of the strategic plan that we had before, which was a very rigid model, uh, in the past. Uh, this is, uh, moving into more dynamic model, uh, one that's more elastic, uh, one that is more, that talks about change. And it will change and evolve as our school district changes. And, uh, it's more of a. And uh, it's more of a modernization, if you will, on the uh prior older strategic plan. And it's exciting. It puts us in a pretty vulnerable spot, uh but it's a very transparent place to be. So what we're going to talk about today, and sorry, that's a little bit small for you to see. Um, the the first part of the plan, uh and this plan can be uh viewed on our website. It will also be attached to um the agenda. So uh I I do welcome people to kind of follow along with us. Um, and we're going to give a very brief overview of our structure of the strategic plan. Um, our board has helped us identify seven pillars, which created four goals. So if you look on the right hand side, uh we have our four goals in academic excellence, career and college excellence, holistic excellence, and excellence in instruction with engaged community, uh excuse me, commitment with our parents. And so the the first four goals are embedded into all of our school plans. And so the links on each side, I will soon be uh introducing you to um our high school co-principals who will uh begin to uh share with us a little bit about the structure, a little bit about the plan. And the rest at the very bottom, those are our department areas. And so um what this does is this gives accountability uh to what's happening in our classrooms, but also what's happening in our departments at the district office. On this slide, this is the vulnerability that I talked about. Um, it is not often where you will see a school district put out a strategic plan with these types of numbers, our scores. And we're happy to do that, um to get the excellence, um to lay that foundation. We know that we have to put ourselves in a very transparent mode. And in this top section, we're actually sharing our scores and they're broken down by uh Gen Ed students, our special education students, our English language learner students. And all of that is available for people to look at. Because it's really important to do this right, we have to know where we are now. Because if we don't know where we are now, then we really don't know where we are going. And I'm very proud, there's been hundreds of hours feedback provided week after week after week. And we're really excited. This is really good work. And I'm very, very proud to be able to have this opportunity to walk you through this structure from each of the uh components of this plan. So I'm going to start with um our high school and our co-principals, uh Ms. Decatrelle and also Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. Um, so we'll, we won't read the whole plan to you. We'll just scroll through a little bit and hopefully the screen will move. There we go. And just give you some highlights about the different pillars. So we're starting with the overarching goal. We want to make a two percent gain in each area of the U S News and World Report, uh California Public High School Ranking Scorecard. And each area includes references to A P exams, our math and reading proficiency, and our graduation rate. And this is also in alignment with the the California C C R Is, College and Career Readiness Indicators from the California Dashboard. So what we've done is really tried to live the values of of our mission statement by bringing the community together, including all of the voices and talking about what does educational excellence look like in our school. And we have ideas about what the goals should be and what the metrics should be. We worked very hard as a leadership team to put that together and be in close alignment with what the middle school is doing as well. Um, so we're we're just having those discussions so far about how do we move our CASP scores in reading and math, how do we open access to A P exams? Um, and as a faculty, how do we improve our graduation rate? And how do we do that across content areas? So we need to find a way to do this collaboratively. It's not just about math and English. It's about how do we do this as a whole school? Um, so we have our goals and we're in the process of developing action steps uh that everybody is feeling invested in and feels are attainable. And then we have. There. Doink. I'm stuck. Help. Help, help. So then the the next part of the plan talks about career readiness specifically after we go through the academic goals. And in in our career goals, they really focus on the retention and development of highly qualified industry faculty and continuing and increasing the community partnerships through our C T E Advisory Committee. Our Career Day Event, College Fair, and C T E Capstone Events. We've also continued to offer and expand our dual enrollment offerings, allowing students both college credit and a head start in many various industry uh classwork. So that's a highlight of the career, the the highlight of the academics. And Mr. Stewart will talk with you about our S E L and our engaged and committed parent goals.
Thank you, Ms. Decatrelle. Uh, I am Mr. Stewart, uh Drew Stewart. I'm one of the co-principals, the other co-principal at the high school.
And and he's the fun one because he wore tie day on tie dye day.
Thank you. I wasn't gonna say anything, but everybody else got dressed up. But today's is homecoming week. We look forward to seeing everybody at the game. Speaking of S E L, speaking of community engagement, um please come out to the homecoming game on Friday. We have the uh dance on Saturday night, so we're very excited. And today was tie dye day. So that's why I look like this. Um, thanks to Mr. Hankler and A S B for the awesome shirt. Um, so uh talking about S E L goals, um social emotional learning uh is the is the next goal uh in tenet sort of of our plan moving forward for for the district and for our school. And it's, I feel like we say this about a lot of things, but it's probably never been more important. Um, it it's always an important thing, talking about the whole child when when we're looking at education. Um, and certainly now as we're sort of coming out of the last phase of of where we've all been. So our S E goals, uh S E L goals are to promote, measure, and monitor student well-being and connectedness uh to our campus community. Um, some examples of the work in the way in which we're doing this work is through um continuing to promote our P B I S programming, our student activity opportunities um in both co and extracurriculars. Uh, and then one thing that we actually just completed today was our ninth grade S O S program, um which is meeting with every single ninth grader on our campus, um promoting mental wellness and getting to know them and any students that are immediately at risk as they begin their high school career to try to help them find a trusted adult to talk to um in a in a safe place uh moving forward. And then our last and our fourth goal is engaged and committed parents. So uh we continue to work on this and uh we have a great partnership with P T S A, uh other parent groups, um we we heard from B H E F earlier. So there's, we have tons of support in this community. And um one of the hallmarks that we continue to try to do is build that relationship with these folks through great communication um as well as with all of our parent community. So I know that one thing Ms. Decatrelle and I have been doing um along with our entire school staff is is really promoting that open and communication, sending out updates about what the school is doing and where we're at and and also asking parents to communicate with us as well. So that is the fourth uh goal for our plan. Thank you all. Oh, and I would like to introduce Dr. Skon.
Hi, I'm the principal at Beverly Vista Middle School. Am I supposed to click online? I don't see it. Oh, there we go. B V M S. Okay, all right. So I'm gonna just highlight a few of um the key areas for each of the four goals. So for our academics, um to address the academic progress, um the B V M S teachers and staff have have committed to a school-wide focus on critical thinking and analysis. Specifically, all departments will incorporate the C E R. That's our Claim Evidence Reasoning Framework. Um, the skills taught through this framework supports the standards and the expectations of CASP as well as the College and Career Readiness Goals. Um, B V M S has already given our baseline C E R task. And we've scored it and we've started analyzing our data actually this week. Um, and we're comparing that data with our CASP data as well. Additionally, teachers are engaged this week in professional development aligned to the C E R framework. For our career and college pathways, B V M S is committed to the strengthening of our pathways by ensuring a two-course sequence for all of our pathways. They're also very committed to the cross-articulation with both the elementary and the high school to ensure continuity and growth. We get both sides, we get elementary and high school. Um, and we will continue to highlight our programs through our pep rallies. So each group gets a a recognition at our three pep rallies throughout the year. Um, as well as this year, we're gonna um pilot a Vapa Spirit Week. Um, our S E L at B V M S, uh we will continue to ensure that students' social emotional needs are met by um very similar to the high school promoting, measuring, and monitoring student well-being. We will also ensure that our students are connected to one another, the campus and the community. And we're actually gonna measure this twice a year, so we're gonna measure um in October um and ensure that a hundred percent of our students feel connected to someone or something on campus. And then we'll measure that again in the spring. Um, and we will support this endeavor through the work of our counselors, our P B I S team, our club offerings, and our after-school opportunities that we have. Um, for our engaged and committed parents, B V M S is keenly aware that the importance of a strong connection um with parents and the community is vital. We are committed to growing these relationships through opportunities such as our monthly parent universities. Um, I actually invite you to attend this month's parent university this Thursday in the auditorium at B V M S at six thirty. Um, this partnership between parents and B V M S uh developed through these opportunities i- is essential to our greater success. Um, so I look forward to implementing this plan with our community. And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Bugby and Mrs. Kabor.
Thank you, Dr. Skon. Job well done, especially being the only one who gets to present by yourself.
Okay, I'm tasked with finding the tab. Um, there we go. I'm Sarah Kabor. I'm the principal at Hawthorne School. And it's my pleasure to present alongside um Craig Bugby. Let you introduce yourself.
Craig Bugby, principal at Horace Mann Elementary School.
Amazing. So as we start with our academic goals for excellence, we're committed to the growth and development of all T K five students that we'll measure several times throughout the school year. We've already started with our initial um assessments at our site level. And we've begun the process to align those assessments across the two schools and to develop a scope and sequence um for all of the grades. We are going to bring some of this data to you in November and again in March, just to show our progress.
Thank you. And to ensure that our youngest students are college and career ready, we will be increasing guest speakers at Career Day, a new thing this year, by combining both elementary schools at one school. It's gonna be a logistical dream come true to access a larger group of speakers and experiences for all of our elementary students. If anyone is willing to be a volunteer speaker, volunteer speaker, please reach out to Mrs. Kabor or myself.
We're taking volunteers right from the floor. Um, so our next goal, I'm supposed to line it up, hold on. Who's career? Scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. Okay. So our S E L uh part is that that S E L is a focus on mental health and social skills that are needed for the success of all students in an ever-changing world. So in addition to our P B I S work, we're also making sure that S E L is not siloed with our counselors, even though they do classroom lessons every other week and so that all T K five students receive those lessons. But that the information that's coming through and the big focus on the fact that mental health is health and we need to develop skills in order to interact with each other, um especially after some COVID time, is gonna be pushed much more into our morning meeting and into lessons actually given by teachers. Um, we've also developed, um worked with our counselors to develop four units to follow, one for each um ten weeks of the school year. There'll be growth mindset and goal setting, emotion management, empathy and kindness, and problem solving.
Thank you. And in terms of parent engagement. Committed parents. Yeah. In terms of parent engagement, we know how important it is to have a partnership with our parents and our community. This ensures that all stakeholders have access to information about their child's academic and social emotional growth. To ensure this, both Hawthorne and Horace Mann Elementary Schools send a weekly newsletter, which is also posted on our website. And we also plan to increase our social media presence as well as inviting all parents to coffee with the principals at either site. And next up, ladies and gentlemen, an incredibly welcome addition to the elementary team, our new coordinator of elementary ed, Ms. Maggie Mayberry.
I have a tab, very exciting. Thank you for having me. I can't find the working document right here. I apologize. Okay. Right here, I'm sorry. Right here. There, that one looks like letters. There we go.
There we go.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. I am Maggie Mayberry. I am the coordinator of elementary education and so excited to provide to you with in the strategic plan a working business proposal for the board to consider an early childhood education center. And right now, our ed services team has been working on doing some visits and auditing of local programs and kind of what we're considering exemplar programs of districts that have had these centers open for many years and kind of capitalizing on their successes by replicating them and seeing what we could do to replicate that within our own community. So we are very excited because we're starting to move to a different stage in the game where we are talking about what our staffing needs would be, what curriculums we'd be having our earliest learners here in Beverly Hills identify with and be taught to within the school, as well as what is this place gonna look like once it's in in the process of of being made and built from the ground up. So we are excited to kind of take this adventure with you and support you and answer questions about it. And I think that's all from us. I have no one to lead into. Thank you.
Well, we're gonna go right into our departments. With Dr. Horvath is next. All right, I missed the cue. Um, I see it. Um, with, uh-oh, now I'm blanking. Sorry. Um, with excellence as our guide contained in the certificated and classified section is our plan to recruit, hire, train, and retain the top talent in the field of education. Within this section, we have goals, objectives, and benchmarks in each of those four areas. And as you heard from my colleagues, all the work that they're doing, I think it's important to know that this piece of the plan is aligned to the great work ha- great work happening in all of their areas within the strategic plan with the ultimate goal of continuing growth and development of each of our certificated and classified members. I couldn't, we can't do the work um here without all of that excellent work, especially in ed services. Dustin's doing the training and that training takes place at all of our campuses on an ongoing basis. Um, I think one of the things to notice, and and I know the board throughout this time has pushed really about what the metrics look like in this area. So we're really, and that's the interesting part about this plan, it is elastic. And we're really trying to hone in on some great metrics that we'll be using um in this area. What I will say is we are one of the only district, and I just met with our our colleagues when we're talking about recruiting and and hiring. Um, just met with all of the AXA Region fourteen members. And we are the only one a hundred percent staffed in the certificated arena. So very proud of that. And I think that's testament to to the to the district, um the name of the district and the work that we do to to um hire great talent here in both both of our classified and certificated ranks, so. in both of our classified and certificated ranks, so.
Okay, thanks for having us, everybody. Thanks for hearing about some of our security goals that we're gonna be doing soon. Here we are. All right, great. So I wanna start by acknowledging the three pillars of our security plans: proactivity, transparency, and accountability. And I wanna publicly support that. I think it's a really, really great three pillars for what we're trying to do. So, you know, if you read through the document, you'll see three specific goals with some timeframes, but just to give a quick overview, from kind of a proactivity perspective, we're looking at things like our emergency supplies at all the schools. That can be our 72-hour stay bins, those like in case of an emergency. Do we have enough blankets, shelter, food, water to host staff and students for a 72-hour period? So we're getting that taken care of, and looking forward to that. But it's not just about ordering, it's about making sure people know where they are, that they know how to use them as we drill over the course of the year and we practice, there's a familiarity with those supplies and what they're used for, whether they're the lockdown kits in the classrooms or out in the fields where we evacuate. And really, that leads me into my second, the second pillar, and also a second goal, which is transparency. So transparency covers a lot. One of the things we're trying to do is just like transparency with staff about our ongoing training for emergencies. We want people to feel like they're part of the process, whether that's part of our principals advisory councils, training with staff, the drills, et cetera. And in fact, some of our community partners like Stop the Bleed and our CPR training. So speaking of these trainings, one of the areas of growth that we're looking at is to make sure that we don't just have our monthly drills at all the sites, but that we document, that we reflect, and we record some of the things that went well and some of the areas for growth, and that we share that out. We share it with staff, we share it with the community when appropriate. Certainly, we share it with the board and our district leaders. So this communication, so it's not just about doing the drills, but about the transparency about it and the communication that goes involved with that transparency. And lastly, accountability, especially when it comes to our student safety, accountability, watchfulness, training, reiterating, sharing a vision. These are all things that we're doing, whether, and you know, mostly we're talking about now our very robust security, school security team that goes across the district. There's union members, there's security partners, there's the command center staff, and of course, there's district administration and all our partners. So this idea of knowing what are our roles and practicing them, and being aware of the certain spots and the certain assignments that come up over the course of the day or course of the week that need to be monitored. So we're doing that now, we're working together, informing, while we do it, I think, a camaraderie and a vision. So these are our three pillars, and if you look at the goals, they look a little prosaic on paper, but they are those three exact things, and they support those three pillars. So I'm looking forward to that, and next up, Sandy Sosi with our IT.
Hello, my name is Sandy Sosi. I'm the director of IT. The technology department has developed the following goals in line with the district's vision of excellence in education. Our goal is to implement strong systems approaches that work with our technology plan. These goals will help support educational partnerships, most importantly fiscal responsibility, project roadmapping for ongoing technology needs. Our goals start with this stated in this document outline our vision for the department to support end-users, sites, and while developing and implementing framework around our district's technology plan. Our team is currently working on many projects that include building and supporting strong networks while implementing a robust IT security protocols, which we're working on currently with Vector USA, which has been awesome, especially in light of recent events, and then also partnering with Laco on this as well. They're really impressed with the goals that we have started with this and the roadmap that we have kind of planned moving forward. So this plan will also follow everything else that we're working with, and will flow from each one of our projects that we have ongoing with our, like I said, end-users, operations, backup systems, Wi-Fi monitoring, and addressing different upgrades that we have coming up, especially next year. And once again, going back to being fiscally responsible and working with Raphael and his department, because we have a lot of purchases that are gonna be coming up as we upgrade a lot of our networking systems as well. We have our theater projects at two of the schools that we hope to get accomplished by this year, both of them. IT security adoption policy, and then also backup recovery for our phones, our phone voicemail systems, and then also replacement of equipment as well. So on this document, we kind of go through all of those different goals, and then the project outlines with the prices and also timelines on them. Thank you. And up next, I have Raphael.
Good evening, and thank you again for this wonderful opportunity to talk today about our facilities department. And we also have a goal of excellence. And to present that, we have Mr. Ken Haas today, who will be going over the facilities plan. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ken Haas. I'm the executive director of construction and facilities for the district. Good evening, President Wells, board members, and Dr. Bregy. Tonight, I will be presenting an overview of the facilities department's role in the district's strategic plan. The facility department will ensure that the district facilities are safe, compliant, and in excellent condition so that we can provide an environment that is conducive to student achievement, safety, and success. We have developed and implemented goals so that we can monitor our progress and make adjustments to plans as necessary. Our first goal is to continue to implement our board-approved five-year deferred maintenance plan. We have completed tasks for the 2021, 21, 22 fiscal years and are on a path to successfully complete our 2022 and 2023 objectives. Some of the major 2022 and 23 major projects completed are the interior and partial exterior rehabilitation of Hawthorne Elementary School and Beverly Vista Middle School sites. Our second goal is to continually assess facilities' needs. This means identifying projects that range from in-house maintenance projects, deferred maintenance projects, and construction projects. We use the information gathered to prioritize projects by categories and funding sources. Our third goal is that we are working towards to continually improve the response rates for our work orders. We do this by assessing the time it takes to resolve open repair orders. We also ensure that our staff has the tools, materials, and equipment to achieve success. Leveraging our Brightly software formerly known as School Dude assists us with this task. Our fourth goal is we've developed a plan to address our FIT report observations with the goal of having all of our schools rated as excellent. This goal will take the efforts of our entire BHUSD family as it relates to not only facility issues, but staff behavior such as storage of unused items. Our fifth goal is that in order to ensure that our schools are always in excellent condition, clean, safe, and compliant, we've developed a site inspection document that we will use to formalize our inspection and reporting processes. We're developing and will soon implement a monthly survey that our principals will be able to use in order to help ensure that our sites are satisfied with conditions to identify areas in need of improvement. I hope I don't regret that part. We are continually providing professional development for our MNO staff in order to ensure we are prepared to keep our schools clean and in excellent state of repair. We are increasing our random site inspections to assess our MNO department's effectiveness. In November, we will be providing the board a more detailed report on deferred maintenance plans, work order response time, monthly surveys, professional development, and inspections. And finally, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for establishing and implementing a code of excellence for our school district. Free for any questions. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, and next up, we have our construction department update. We're actually very happy today because, and grateful to the board, we have our new construction team. It's all coming together. We actually have our founder Solari team here today, Mr. Amin Solari, our executive director as well, Mr. Will Karat. And we actually have our Pro West team here too, so we're really thankful that they're here. And so it's all coming together, we're all working together, and it's a bright future for us. And so Mr. Karat will proceed with describing the plan. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you, everybody. And I especially wanna thank the board and the district for giving me this opportunity. I really appreciate it. So far, in this first week, I've received a warm welcome from everyone, including Raphael and Ken, of course. And then the Pro West has done a great job of welcoming me, same with founder Solari, so I wanna thank everybody. So, for our construction strategic plan, we've come up with, you know, construction services with a goal of excellence. And we, our goal is to construct and modernize historical school sites in a manner that achieves... Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta... Construct and modernize historical school sites in a manner that achieves the district's mission and vision statements and provides excellent school buildings that are conducive to student achievement, safety, and success. So with that strategic plan in mind, we've come up with some goals. We have about five goals that we've established, and I'll just touch on a couple of them. One is to increase communication with the board. We wanna make a serious and a hard effort at doing that, increasing communication. And that's with the district as well, and that's pertaining to all of our construction projects. We'd also wanna ensure that the construction projects are monitored closely to ensure projects are transparent, fiscally responsible, and constant updates are provided. To go along with those goals, we developed action items to help us achieve those goals. And I won't touch on all of them, but for the most part, we wanna identify the status and provide updates as they pertain to the schedule for the construction projects and also the budget. And once again, with complete transparency and communication is our goal. And also, we're gonna hold weekly meetings between our founder Solari team and our construction team as well. And we are going to work at increasing the presence of the construction team at the project sites. And we wanna ensure the project is progressing, safety measures are being followed, and we gather data to verify the accuracy of what's been completed. And to go along with all that, we developed a metric that would help us complete all these goals with some milestones. So our first assessment, or metric assessment, would be to update and renew the facilities master plan. And in November, we plan to present a rough draft of that new facilities master plan. And then, along with that, we'll have consistent construction updates, weekly meetings, which are already in progress. And we're also going to increase the district presence at the construction sites, which we've already started as well. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tim Ellis.
Hi, thank you very much for being here. As far as our athletic plan going up, we're gonna start from the bottom down. Our bottom going up, in terms of, my ultimate goal is to have all of our athletes connected, or all of our students connected through athletics, starting at the grammar schools and moving its way up through the high school. Two of my goals, starting at the grammar school level, would be the having an all-track meet for the middle schools, or the grammar schools playing against one another every spring, that they can get out and run around. FYYA is our middle school sports organization that organizes all that. They go down to the fifth grade, so there is, I would like to be able then to start at the fifth grade level with some competitive sports where those kids now can play with their classmates and their teammate, or kids they go to school with, and I think that's very important. Ultimately, we want our kids to stay in our schools throughout their whole career. And I think the closer they get connected, the earlier they get connected to our schools. If we provide that opportunity, the more chance we're gonna have of keeping those kids. Moving up then to the middle school, we wanna expand that BV middle school sports program in terms of some other sports like tennis, baseball, softball. A lot of it depends upon the facilities available to us throughout the city, but working with the city, trying to get some extra space to be able to make those sports happen for those particular extra sports. The success we're having in terms of the number of kids right now at the middle school is phenomenal, and I wanna be able to expand that and provide more opportunities for more kids to do different types of sports. We have the fitness room at BV that's going in. It's, the floor has been ordered, it's been painted, we're waiting on the equipment to show up, so now we also have a chance for those kids to start working on their bodies, getting bigger, stronger, and make themselves better athletes. We're also working on upgrading the facilities at BV, turning those outdoor courts, basketball courts that are asphalt, we're gonna turn them into sport courts, which are more rubberized material, safer, not as dirty. I know part people were saying how dirty the asphalt is, but they're great. They're weather resistant, and it's a lot safer, and it will help us that way. And moving into the high school, one of my specific goals is I would like to bring a girls' golf team back onto the, to the, into the facilities. We're starting to get some interest in that. I know there's some girls at the middle school that wanna play golf. Coach Rinaldi, we have our golf coach, would love to have a girls' team, so we're gonna try to work on that as well. That's one of my real specific goals for the high school. And then to upgrade our facilities now until the construction of the new buildings get done, but to be able to upgrade our facilities, and I think there's been a directive to do some of that work, and I'm very excited about upgrading the facilities that we have to make our place as nice as it can be. That's one of our, one of my big goals there, to do that. And then to expand our summer programs for our high school to make us more competitive in all of our sports and to change the direction and the focus of what our sports programs do in the summer and how it's gonna enhance us going forward. And those are a lot of my major goals, and I appreciate all you guys do for me and everything else. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you.
All right, and now moving on to business and fiscal services. Again, good evening. So I just wanna say, our fiscal department, I'm very happy, we have an excellent team. Our team always strives for excellence, and this goal really is something that we're all very excited about. Our team is very excited about this. So the BHUSD fiscal services team will ensure that the district maintains a fiscally sound budget. That's a very important thing. We wanna make sure that we maintain that fiscally sound budget and that we provide excellent financial services to all of our employees, all our community partners, and everyone else. And for us, excellence will be defined by successfully paying our employees on time. That's actually really important. Everyone needs to get paid on time and correctly. Those are two very important factors. They sometimes go fly under the radar, but it's very important that we pay people on time and accurately. And expedite in the processing of requisitions, so our teachers have what they need, when they need it, paying vendors on time so that our vendors want to do business with us, and accurately reporting financial information so that we don't get in trouble with the state or with Laco or anybody else. So that's our main focus. And some of our goals are to, of course, maintain that fiscally sound budget, establish monthly meetings with our school sites, so our school sites know how their budget is going and if they need anything. Also, develop a business services procedure manual and implementation of the frontline time reporting and attendance system. In order to get there, there's several action items. I won't touch on all of them, but one of the main ones that we're looking at is establishing ongoing meetings with our principals and departments to ensure our budgetary resources are considered and evaluated. Of course, we're also looking to develop and establish industry-standard procedures for all of our departments, from position control to cash collection to ASP monitoring to and other business department functions. It's really important that these procedures are written in the method of a business services procedure manual, which we will be working on. Of course, we want to make sure the accuracy of our financial statements are accurate for our adopted budget, our first and second interim, as well as our unaudited actuals. We wanna make sure that's all correct. And we hope to do quarterly surveys with sites to ensure that our quality of services are being provided from our fiscal services team. And of course, we want to engage with our auditors and make sure that we're doing a good job with that as well. And of course, it's all nice to say all these things, but we also wanna make sure we are having some assessments, some metric assessments. And we do have some, if you look at the strategic plan, some goals there, like ongoing meetings with principals, establishing industry-standard procedures, financial reporting, all of these goals there that you'll see in this plan here. And we have some thresholds there in November, in March, and in June. So we hope to meet those, and I think we will, because we have an excellent team. We have, you know, not only in the fiscal services department, but everywhere else. This is a great team at BHUSD, so thank you so much, and I'll turn it over. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Stockens, and I am our Director of Public Relations. And part of that responsibility has meant really trying to refresh, revise, re-envision what recognition means for our school district under this umbrella of educational excellence. And so I worked very closely with Mr. Seaman on what this looks like. And I just wanna mention to everyone at home, it may feel like we're flying through these. It may not feel like that. However, everything is available. All of these links, every single one of these plans, all of those rankings, every part that we have presented tonight is available right now on our website at bhsd.org/strategicplan/ Don't forget that. Don't forget that slash at the end. You can also go to our homepage, and you will see the link right there. So feel free to revisit any of these areas. So this is a real stretch area for us. Mr. Haleimi has used that word many times in our planning sessions. And pinning us down to what does recognition look like for BHUSD was something new. It wasn't in our last strategic plan. And we've really articulated five specific areas of recognition that we are going to strive for. They are academic, program, student, staff, and communications. So these metrics really range from some rankings and some awards. It's a mixture, because in education, it's not always cut and dry how you get these things. And so you'll be able to see when you go to this plan that we have links for every single one of them and how we can actually achieve these. Some of these are obtained through a process where the board has to nominate us, and some of them we can nominate ourselves, and some of them, the community can nominate us. So it's touching all of our different stakeholders and really encapsulating the fact that we want to challenge ourselves this year in finally using this pillar, Goal Seven, in having that recognition of the hard work that is done in our classrooms and our sites by all levels of staff, students, and our stakeholders. So I will now close it back to Dr. Breggy, and thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, and again, I want to thank everybody on our leadership team that worked on this, along with our board. And I do want to just give a sincere thank you to our Board of Education for allowing us to do something that's a little bit more reflective of what our practice is. You know, our last strategic plan, you know, there was a beginning, and there was an end. And you've heard us talk about many times that we're trying to achieve one year's growth in one year's time. And so the important thing is that growth over the year. And for the first time, we're putting those measures into place with our check-ins throughout the year. And that's what's important. So we're going to be able to keep this alive, and we're going to be able to show you during our check-ins, our growth in one year's time in all of these different areas. I challenge anybody to find another school district with such a robust plan, but we did this together, and if approved tonight, the real work starts tomorrow on this plan. So, but we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. I'd like to thank everybody for all of your hard work and our board as well. I think that, first of all, you see a lot of new faces here this evening, and we've made a lot of changes. We've taken a really hard look at the district, and we've been through some very challenging years. And so we, you can see the changes. You see changes in the different bases and the different roles that people are now playing. And we looked at the district and looked at our strategic plan and those goals, and we've refined them and dialed them in and put strategies behind them that we can measure. And we've already set dates for when we will be looking at those measurements throughout the year so that we can track them and make adjustments that need to be made as we go so that we can be agile and responsive to what's happening during the school year, so that we can get to where we want to go. And I'm really, really excited about this strategic plan. I would say that in many ways, we've started the strategic plan because we started working on this in the summer. And I know that the staff has already been meeting with principals, and in many ways, this is already being, and it's already being put into play. It's just that now we have, we've continued to fine tune this, and we will continue to fine tune it as we go. But I'm excited for this to be out in the public, and I'm excited for us to approve this this evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Breggy, and to all of our administration and district leaders who came and gave their reports tonight. And I just wanted to say thank you so much for the actual metrics and statistics that you've provided, because there's a difference between having a goal and then actually showing what those goals are numerically, and that's exactly what you've done and what the board has done. And it provides accountability not just to the community, but to ourselves as a board and as a district that we can follow throughout the year. And then also, one thing I wanted to say also is that the path to educational excellence is not straight. There are so many layers that go into creating educational excellence, which is here, but there are so many other areas where we need to be excellent. So instructional excellence, environmental excellence, character excellence, communicational excellence. And I truly think that this strategic plan hits all of those areas, and I'm excited to see how we continue to implement this throughout the year.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to make a comment about the fact that Dr. Breggy thanks the board, but I would like to thank the cabinet and his administration for all the hard work that they put in to bring this together and pull it together for us. The collaboration of both groups could not have happened without one or the other. So I really feel that, you know, you want to thank the board, but I want to thank you and your cabinet. That's number one. I want to talk about the fact that I was a part of the original strategic plan. And this one puts the other one back in the olden days supposedly. It's really, it's really more comprehensive. It really puts into progress the goals and how we measure the goals, the metrics, and the plans, and it's just so comprehensive, it's just unbelievable, and I just want to make that comment. I also want to think that nothing is set in stone. And even as we go forward, we will find areas where we may need to make some changes or make some adaptations, and we will be open to them because that's the way we are. We are flexible. So I just want to, I just hope that come next June, when we hear the report and we see the results, I know we're going to be up there in excellence. And I want to thank you again, and thank everybody who made their presentation tonight, too. You really are appreciated. Thank you. A big hand to all of you, and I'll pass it off to Mandy.
Nothing further to add, just a big thank you. Lots of hard work, lots of collaboration from many layers, and thank you.
It's a great example that the board sets, right? We talk about, we have to be the first ones in the district to set the example for everybody. And what my colleague, Mrs. Marcus, brought up about the previous strategic plan, it's a good thing because before that, we didn't have a plan. Then we got a plan. Then we said, you know what? We can make the plan better. And that's what we expect from our administrators, from our teachers, and from our students. Wherever you are, you could be better, right? And we'll start, and we'll do it first, because there's, we have room for improvement. We learn from those opportunities, and we move forward. From the amount of work that has been done on this plan, I've never, I don't think, in my life on this board, sat in a room with cabinet and administrators for the amount of time that we have putting this thing together and working collaboratively. We are all on that path to meet our mission of educational excellence. That's what this is all about. You know, the board got very lofty right there when we said, yeah, 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 let's cut it down to two words, educational excellence. That's what we want. That's our mission, right? And then staff is always smart enough to kind of lasso us a little bit and just kind of pull us back down and say, yes, but we are starting from a certain point. We will get there, but here we are now. So we'll help, you guys will help us see how we take those steps. We just want to keep reminding you to keep walking forward. We can't do it alone, though, you know? We have, I said this earlier in our study session, we have exhausted our parameter in this, right? Our purview in this and creating the strategic plan. Now it's up to staff to execute it, but it's also up to parents and students. We can't forget that they are major stakeholders in this district's success. And we can go parade around and trumpet around all these wonderful things that are happening tonight and all these goals and visions, but unless we have our parents and our students buying in, we cannot pull this off. So we have to remember that. So those discussions that we had from our school site leaders saying connectiveness, those words, connectiveness, are more important than we would think. Because we would think, oh, you know, it's really important to make sure somebody can leave fifth grade, know how to write an essay, right? That's, we struggle in that area, too. So we'll work on that, but we need buy-in from everybody, and to buy in, you have to have that connectiveness. You have to have people feel, it, most people watching this or here tonight would never understand that there are parents in the community that never stepped foot on their kid's campus. You can't have an excellent school district when you have that. That has to change. We change the way we do things. We change the way we do our homework. We read a little more. Maybe we pick up a book that we want to read. Maybe we write in a journal to make sure we're writing. Maybe we give it the odd problems in math, but we tackle it just a couple of even, just to go a little bit further. We change the way we do things. We change the results. If we keep doing things the same and wonder why we're not excellent, we've answered the question in the asking. So I look forward to us moving forward with this strategic plan, saying this entire district wants to get better. We want to do better. Nobody is sitting on laurels anymore. We are moving forward. Everybody has to be on board. Everybody. There is not one person that can't be on board if we want this thing to succeed because nobody else should have to pull anybody's weight. It should be everybody responsible for their own teaching and their own learning. Thank you.
I would say that, you know, we started these planning sessions in the summer, and it started with the question of educational excellence and how do we get there? And these plans came through that lens. And it's lofty, yes, but I think that we can't get to where we want to go if we don't set that goal. And we've set the goal, and I think that Dr. Breggy and his cabinet and staff came on this ride with us about how do we, what does educational excellence look like? And how are we going to get there and put measurable goals there? And it is vulnerable, and I think that we should all appreciate that because there is a tendency when you're planning to put a lot of cushion there because you're going to be evaluated and you want to be able to meet your goals and make certain that you do. And we asked them to take that reach with us, that even if we, even if it's a goal that's out of reach or slightly out of reach, let's shoot for the stars and see how we get there. And that's, that's something that, that's a big ask, I think, especially coming out of COVID. And, you know, we are all just kind of evaluating like where we are at, and to ask to set these very big goals was, is a lot to ask everybody to buy into. But I think that there isn't, there is a momentum behind this. I think that you can, you can feel the energy in our district, and it started with the board and the cabinet. And I think that we need to continue to send that message and to build that momentum and buy in in our community. And I think Noah's right. We have, we need a culture of excellence, and that is in our plan. And that is what is going to get us to be the district that we all know we are and can be. And so I'm just super excited to approve this plan this evening. And I want to thank everybody for coming on this journey with us. Anybody else with questions? Okay. Rebecca?
Oh, I was just stopping sharing so our student board member was able to present now.
Okay. Next is our student board report.
I think today's report is really exciting. No video. I'm sorry to say, no video. But, but homecoming on Friday. I promise there will be a video next time. Okay. So the first thing is, not last Thursday, Thursday before, Beverly Hills High School had its annual Club Rush, formerly called Club Day. So each year at the beginning of the school year, each approved club on campus kind of gathers on the third floor near where the cafeteria is outside and has their own designated table where, you know, they have posters and flyers and sign-up sheets for students to kind of walk around that third floor and see all the clubs that the school has to offer. And it allows, you know, the clubs to recruit new members, but also for students, especially our freshmen, to really, you know, find out, find places where they can get involved on campus and all the things that our school has to offer. We have so many, so many clubs here on campus, from language and culture clubs to different career paths, to like healthcare, to literature, to even clubs focusing on trying snacks from around the world or community service projects. Personally, I'm involved on, in two clubs on campus. DECA, which is our business-centered club that competes in business-related scenarios from entrepreneurship to finance to hospitality and tourism, and we also do a lot of career networking. And then I'm also in our French Language and Culture Club, which organizes the annual cabaret at the end of the school year and encourages the study of French culture, as well as a daily and practical use of French in addition to students who are taking the language at school. And then these are just some photos from Club Day. And then the next thing was, that night actually, was our annual college fair. And I just also want to give a huge shout-out to all of the college and career counselors at the high school, Ms. Barnison, Ms. Koo, Ms. Dubin, who, you know, put so much time into organizing these kinds of fairs, and they're incredible. So that night, also on the third floor patio, students were able to visit so many different colleges and universities and, you know, post-high school options from four-year universities to even the armed forces were there, which was very cool. And personally, I had the opportunities to talk to reps from not only schools I'm already applying to, but from schools that I had never even heard about and I'm seriously considering applying to now because you learn about so many different opportunities, about the options from, you know, schools that will give you more merit aid depending on your academic performance. Or, you know, different schools have different excellence in certain programs, and we really learned a lot about that. And it's an amazing way to, for students to network with these schools and get on their mailing list and make an impression, especially if it's a school you really want to go to. And in general, it's just such a great ambiance, and I came home that night with a giant stack of pamphlets from a bunch of different schools, and it was a lot of fun. So those are some pictures from that night. And then last week was our ninth-grade parent social. Unfortunately, I was not feeling well, so I was not there, and I'm very sad that I was not there. But it seemed like a lot of fun at the Beverly Cannon Gardens. And BHHS PTSDA invited several ASP members, as you can see here. You can see President Wells with our ASP and Ms. Marcus as well. So we got, so ASP members got to come and mingle with the ninth-grade parents and kind of talk to them about life as a high school student and a high school leader from their perspectives and really about the resources that their students can have and the students that they have available to them that can kind of show them the ropes of high school. And it was, again, a really great representation for ASP, and PTSDA has always been incredible about being very inclusive of our involvement in kind of the parent life of the district's sort of relationships. So those are some pictures from that that members of ASP sent me. And then the next thing I wanted to talk about is, I mentioned at our last board meeting that ASP had an all-day kind of leadership conference with Involve Schools, where we learned how to develop and improve our school spirit and how we go about trying to attain that school spirit and revive kind of the, you know, sense of belonging here at the high school. And what we've learned from Involve has already been, started to be implemented. And just one aspect that I would really like to talk about today is our social media presence. And that has really had the biggest impact on us so far. Our ASP president, Ashley Jarabchi, has revitalized our ASP Instagram and our social media presence. Because from the conference, we learned that, you know, the issue we were having with engagement and, you know, reaching out to students about our events was that our social media presence was not doing it in a way that was encouraging engagement, because we had a lot of infographics and a lot of words and a lot of information. And, you know, as we all know, that that's not something that people are very intrigued to see. People like to see pictures. They like to see, you know, people that they know in those photos. So now our ASP Instagram looks like this. It looks like pictures of students, pictures of administration. And, you know, people, you know, like to comment and like the post now because they see people that they know. And it's really changed the way we communicate our events and our plans in school. Because social media really is our primary way of engaging with the students now in the world that we're in. So it was very important that this change was made, and our president has fully taken on this responsibility and has done an amazing job so far. And then the next thing is something Ms. Marcus brought to my attention today. So this week is, or today actually, is National Voter Registration Day. So if you haven't registered to vote already, you should do that. But something that Ms. Marcus brought to my attention was that this is also High School Voter Registration Week. And so what that means is that the state of California actually allows students to pre-register when they turn 16, even though they can't vote in November until they're 18, they can still register at 16. And so right now, students around the US are engaging in service learning to help everyone eligible in their schools, in their high school, to register to vote. And I had a conversation with our ASP advisor today. And, um, I had a conversation with our ASB advisor today, um, and administration is already, um, working with ASB to make this happen and, and provide a support system for our eligible high school students to, um, pre-register to vote. Because it's, you know, um, as, you know, civic duty is very important. And, um, you know, this is like starting that, you know, in high school. And so students can learn about, um, you know, how they need to contribute to, you know, politics and, and civic duty. Um, and especially for a lot of students who are turning eighteen, we're in, uh, we are currently all taking, you know, uh, government and economics. So this is, you know, exactly practical to what we're learning in school and it's just an incredible opportunity that we as Californians have. Um, the next thing I'd like to talk about is this week is a very hectic week here at the high school. Um, this week is our Homecoming Spirit Week, which, um, Mr. Stewart is wearing, um, today's, um, Spirit Day, which is tie dye. Um, so we have a full week of Spirit, Spirit Weekdays this week, um, following up to our Homecoming Game on Friday, which I hope to see everyone at because that's going to be so much fun. We have performances from band, dance company, um, Homecoming Court is being crowned and so much more. Um, and then on Saturday is our, um, Homecoming Dance, um, which is something that we implemented for the first time in many years last year and it was a huge success. I think over six hundred people came. Um, and we're very excited to see how that goes this year. And then something that I'm very excited for, because it's been something that I've been planning for since I became student board member, is my first visit to the BVMS ASB, which I was at yesterday. Um, so yesterday I had the opportunity to, um, take a visit to BVMS and to the ASB class and to learn about what they are doing on campus and how they're u- utilizing their ASB. Because it's a, you know, recent addition to, you know, um, or recent addition to the school district is having the middle school and having, you know, their student government. That is so in, you know, that's, you know, hopefully will develop into the level that our ASB at the high school is. And it's already doing incredible things. Um, I learned so much about what they're doing from their grade level beach cleanups and, um, importance of community service. Um, to, you know, creating a greater sense of spirit also at BV, um, with their music on the green. I believe that's on Fridays. Um, and then also, you know, they were all very excited to talk about sports and, um, the season's starting up soon. And then something that I really wanted to talk about with that is the, sorry, I just lost it. Um, the pathway that this is creating between BVMS and BHHS. Because it really encourages this seamless transition between the ASBs. Because in the K three eight system, we didn't have the level of organizations that, organization that student government has now. Um, so students who, you know, have an interest in becoming student leaders at the high school, you know, can explore that at the middle school and are ready to take on those roles once they come to high school. Um, and it really also just makes those students feel more connected to the high school. Um, because, you know, I, I visited yesterday and our president, Ashley, visited today. So they're already familiar, familiarizing themselves with the, with the students on the campus and, you know, getting to know people. Um, and I hope to make these visits re- reoccurring because it was a lot of fun and they were such amazing students. And one of the biggest things I would like to highlight from my trip yesterday was the BVMS Four Core, which I thought was absolutely incredible because it's very similar to our PBIS, um, initiatives here at the high school. Um, so basically what they do, and I lost this again, um, is on Thursdays, there is a ki- um, raffle that goes on. So throughout the week, um, students who exemplify one of the four core BVMS values, which are to build resilience, value learning, make connections and show integrity. So a student who shows one of these four core values is given a four-core ticket by a teacher or staff member. And, um, students can, you know, collect these tickets and either use them to enter a randomized, um, prize at the end of the week, which was on that slide before with the little wheel, which has a bunch of little fun gifts for them. And I've heard that that's very popular. So I think it really helps incentivize following these core values. Um, or they can save up the tickets to spend at the student store, which is like a list of things that they can get with the cards they've accumulated. And I think, and the goal of this really has been to encourage students to live by the BVMS core values. And it's been a way that students are actually motivated to do so and, and create this positive, um, environment at BVMS. And it's incredible to see. And that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Alex. You're the best ambassador for BHUSD. Really. Really appreciate it. Mrs. Marcus?
Well, I just want to tell Alex again, she did a great job and, and even without the video and so on, it was a very informative speech tonight and very informative, uh, presentation and I really enjoyed it. And thank you for the little shout out, uh, about the voting, because I just found that out today. And I immediately sent it off to Alex and she took it right, right away and put it in her little presentation. I thought it was very nice. And I, I was, I did not know that sixteen-year-olds could vote. And even though they can't vote, they can register. So I thought that would be a great thing to have going on at the high school with, no matter what the age, if they reach sixteen. So a great report again. Thank you, Alex.
Uh, nothing further to add. Just thank you. Appreciated it.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you again. Dr. Bregy?
Um, love the report. That is one of the most thorough reports I've seen a, a student board member do, especially, um, at the middle school. And I, I really like how you have just, you know, you've really, um, included so many other people, um, in your presentation. It's just a nice mix between the text that you have, the pictures that you have. It's just perfectly, uh, put together. And I owe you an email, uh, you and about two hundred others. Um, but I want to, you know, really take you up on, you know, what you saw at BVMS. Um, and, uh, in, in perhaps a time where you're not missing class, that we go over there together. I'm so glad that you got to, uh, see some of the benefits of, um, our dedicated middle school. Um, and there's just so much more to share. It's such an exciting place to be. Um, but it would be fun like for you and I to walk in and out of classrooms and, um, you know, and really just take in the whole environment and the atmosphere there. And I'm just really glad that you pointed that out, um, because, you know, it's like, I couldn't ask for, um, you know, someone better than a student to say and to articulate things that we were articulating in this room five years ago, four years ago, um, you know, those benefits and now you're living them. And then we have a student that's actually recognized them and sharing them. So thank you for that.
I agree. Um, okay, the next item on our agenda is the Construction Program Update. And we have with us Raphael Guzman and our, our new, uh, Director of Construction, Will Karat and Amin Salari.
So, uh, good evening, uh, President Wells, uh, members of our board, Dr. Bregy, cabinet, members of our community. Uh, thank you all again for, uh, for, for being here today and, and we'll go ahead and present on the Bond Construction Program Update. As our, uh, as the months go by, our updates will get more and more and more comprehensive. Uh, we, we're just assembling our team and, uh, we're very excited to have Mr. Karat here with us and, um, as well as Mr. Amin Salari. Uh, and we're appreciative of our board for allowing us to kind of assemble this team, get it, get everything together. And, uh, we're appreciative of our, of our Pro West team as well for working with our founder Salari team with the district. It's, it's really looking like a really bright future ahead, uh, for our construction program and we're really excited. And we're appreciating the partnerships, uh, and, and everything we're, we're doing with, between Fonder Salari, Pro West, our district. It's just, it's, it's all coming together. So we're really excited about that. So, uh, we'll go ahead and turn it over now, uh, to, uh, Mr., um, Will Karat. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Raphael. And I just want to echo everything you just said. It's all absolutely a hundred percent true. So, uh, in this, uh, presentation, we're going to be going through a few different things. Um, uh, Amin is going to be presenting on the program level and program management activities. Um, I'll go through some of the progress on the construction, uh, at the, at the different sites. Um, and Raphael will go through the bond, budget and expenditures. And then, uh, uh, Amin will wrap it up with our future activities. So, Amin?
Uh, good evening, Madam President, board members, committee members and staff. Uh, it's an honor to be here tonight. Uh, and it's an honor to be partner with, uh, Beverly Hills Unified School District, our construction partners, the Pro West and again, being part of the team. Um, since we came on board, first of all, our first goal was to make sure that we are not interrupting whatever is happening in the field. So we staffed our sites and, um, we partner with Pro West, our design teams to make sure what can we do to just not only interrupt, but streamline the processes in the field and make sure everything is being processed timely. Nothing is stopping the work in the field. And I think, uh, we have been successful on that and the work is in progress, uh, the way it was, if not better. We spent a lot of time since we came on board, it's almost two months gathering and organizing the program data and information. Um, it was very important to understand, review the existing condition and, uh, procurement methods. And we are working on that, the contracts and procurement methods to see what can be done to improve for future procurements. Uh, we are creating, uh, and actually we are done with the creation of the program contract logs, uh, to make sure we are not, again, that's part of that, not interrupting services, that what is the expiration days for each one of the services that we have, not only financially, but each, each one of the contracts that we have with different partners, with vendors, when are those contracts being expired? And when should we start procurement for each one of those services? Um, locating and recreating, uh, again, projects data. That's something that we have spent a lot of time during the last two months to make sure we are reorganizing, finding all the information that we need and again, organizing in a way that's more accessible and more usable for our team and the rest of the team. Uh, budget verification, uh, we, again, we inherited the program. The budgets were already defined. One of our goal is to refine and redefine the budget. So we are reviewing all the existing components of the budget for accuracy. And we are finding the areas that we can improve and we are finding the numbers that maybe we can reassign to see what, uh, technically how much money left on the program and what can we do with the money that we have in our hand for future projects. Uh, as part of that effort, we also need to know how much cost we have for the project that's, it's either designed or in design. So we have started estimating the cost for our future projects. That's mainly our three, uh, remaining projects that are at high school site. And planning for future, uh, again, the first goal is to update the budget for future projects. And that's the result of the two bullet items that I speak, spoke about on the previous, the topic. And assessment of the district-wide needs for future planning. I think, again, one of our goal is to align with the district's strategic planning. Uh, the district's master plan was not updated for a while. And it's our goal to again, do a need assessment and, uh, come up with a true and, uh, realistic master plan based on the needs of your ac- academic plan, your strategy plan and the needs of your facilities. Will?
Uh, thank you, Amin. So I'm going to go over, uh, some of the progress at the, uh, few of the project sites. Uh, Beverly Hills High School, B three and B four. Um, so work, when I got here, it was, looked like it was progressing nicely, uh, especially with, uh, the new, uh, CM team and with Pro West. Uh, so, uh, I was happy and, uh, excited to see that. Um, excuse me, uh, we'll be working with Pro West and to monitor and update the construction schedule. Uh, we'll be also working with the design team to improve the process, uh, the design and structural, uh, RFI's that come up due to unforeseen conditions. Uh, we, we came up with a good plan where we're going to have a structural engineer here, uh, every week. And we're also adding another team member to the architectural, uh, team, which will help us answer some of those RFI's. Uh, as far as the progress goes, uh, there's a structural steel and concrete foundations going in. Uh, here we have a picture of the auditorium and also the theater where there's some, uh, metal stud framing going up. And we're also, uh, starting on the site utilities and infrastructure. Uh, on this old, uh, Venecco, am I saying that right? Venecco site. I'm still learning some of these things. Um, we've, uh, completed the first phase of the demolition and now, uh, uh, Fonder Salari team is working to, uh, procure the, the contractor who will complete the rest of the work. And then along with that, uh, the, uh, the rest of the demolition can take place once we get that contract procured. Elrodale Elementary School, uh, this site's starting to look really nice, um, from what I've seen even over the past week. Um, once again, we're going to be working with Pro West on the schedule and updating that schedule. Um, and, uh, coordination for site utilities between the, the contractors and the district and, uh, Ken's team. Um, and some of the progress that's going on, on the site, uh, we're roughing in HVAC, installing windows. Um, lath and plaster starting to go up, which is nice to see that. That's, you know, start of the finishes. Uh, and then we also have the site work and shade structures that, uh, are starting now as well. And I believe we're going to, Raphael, talk about our budget and expenditures.
So if you'd like to see a more, uh, comprehensive report of our, our, our budget and expenditures, um, you know, we, we just recently had our CBOC meeting and we presented like the cash flow and a lot more details. Here's just a, oh, I don't know what happened. I'm sorry. Okay, okay. So, um, in regards to the current, uh, projects, of course, you could see here for Beverly Hills, B three, B four, we're looking at a remaining budget still of about seventy-nine point eight million. There's already about, been about seventy-five point five in expenditures. Uh, in regards to the south side, um, there's about fifteen point, uh, one million in remaining, about nine point seven in expenses. Uh, the Venecco water, uh, cleanup, it's about two point five that have, hasn't been expended there. There's still about five point two remaining. And for the Elrodale modernization, we're looking at a remaining budget of about sixty-eight million with expenses already at about ninety-eight point five. Again, this is a very high level. Um, we could definitely go into more details, but we don't want to make this presentation very, too very long or extensive. Uh, but it is just a quick snapshot of where we are. And as I mentioned before, as we, uh, continue month by month, you'll see modifications based on feedback of what everyone would like to see with these, uh, monthly updates, uh, and presentations. Um, so moving on to expenditures per year, this is a quick snapshot so you could see how these expenses have been going on year by year of what's been budgeted and what's been expended. It's a, uh, you could, you could take a look at that. So far in twenty-two, twenty-three, there's been about, uh, six point, uh, two million in expenses thus far. So it's, uh, just a quick snapshot of, of what every year has looked like, uh, in regards to expenses on, on the budget. And now moving on to future activities and, uh, Mr. Salari.
And I believe you have received our first monthly report as part of your package, uh, the board members. So, uh, and that's going to be the plan for Fonder Salari, again, for, to be transparent and report better. Uh, we are going to have three reports each month. So far, it's going to be one for the program level and one for each one of the active sites. So, uh, total of three monthly reports will be issued and each one of them has a lot of information. Actually, those graphics from the program comes out of our, uh, first monthly report. The future activities, uh, again, as I, uh, stated, our goal is to have a more clear and, uh, accurate budget. So we are assessing and relocating funds of the existing program budgets. And that, that's one of our first goal to make sure and come back and report to you, okay, where are we on the budget of each one of the projects and how much money left? And what can we do with the money that we have left on the program? Um, estimating costs for the future projects, I'm hoping that will be complete, uh, within the next couple of weeks. So that's another thing that we are going to report. Uh, we are currently, uh, estimating the cost for the retaining walls at high school, which can be, uh, one future project and also Building C that's already DSA approved. And after completion of these two, we are going to start the site side athletic fields project, uh, which is currently under DSA review. Need assessment for future projects and master planning, as was mentioned in your strategic goal. Again, this is our goal to align with your strategic plan, be part of your team. And again, team, the first step for having a good master plan is a need assessment. And we are planning, working with Raphael, to come up with the logistics of that and start assessing the existing condition at, at each one of the sites. And eventually, again, that would be the, the result of that would be your master plan, which considers the assessment of the facilities in addition to the, uh, goals and the strategic goals that your educational master plan would define. Uh, we are also working on the improvement of the existing procedures. The, again, the, your bond was in place for a long time, uh, but as, uh, Mr. Noah was saying, there is always a better way of doing this stuff and we are trying to find those and make ourselves and the program better. And on, and active projects, uh, we are working for closely with, uh, Pro West team to assess the existing schedule, improving construction schedule and come up with an accurate, accurate, complete- And come up with an accurate accurate completion date for each one of the active projects that we have in our hands. And I think that's conclude our presentation, if you have any questions, we are here.
Thank you. Again, that concludes our presentation, thank you. Any questions at this time?
Thank you. Alex, do you have any questions?
No questions, just thank you for the report.
Can you go back to the last slide? There was one question I just came to mind.
Sure.
Assessing and improving construction. Are you thinking that it could take longer or just a curiosity or that maybe we be able to shorten that time?
Go ahead.
Our goal is to not to make it longer and make it as short as possible, so.
Uh well, I wanna thank you for the report, it was very interesting and I'm glad that we got it, it was very uh understandable. And I really appreciate everything that you're doing and I'm looking forward to seeing progress going much faster and saving a little bit more money. So thank you very, very much.
Of course.
Great report.
Dr. Stern?
Wonderful report and thank you, it sounds like things are really, the wheels are really turning and I really look forward to the regular reports.
I don't know, Raphael, I think I'll ask you this on, not this slide, it was a couple back with your pie graphs. That one. What are the under south side, what work does that encompass?
It's a.
The future south side work that's currently in, no, so.
It's the current, the the current south side.
That's basically whatever is happening in the south side, it's including the utility work and I.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The trench work and and the Venecco.
Yeah.
So, okay. And my other question is, how many RFI's are currently outstanding?
I don't remember on top of my head, but it should be in the monthly report.
We could definitely get back to you.
I can get back to you again.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna get a gauge on, you know, the flow and and how we're responding to this.
I do believe it was attached in the uh in the monthly report, uh that I mean was just mentioning. So um but we will get back to you on that as well.
Where where is it? Cause this wasn't attached to the agenda, this report, so where is the monthly report that you're referring to?
I think Dr. Breggy sent it.
Was that on the connection?
Yes.
It was on the board.
It's on the connection. And um and and that's and we're looking, working closely to try to resolve that. We spoke a little briefly about some some ideas that.
Right.
Maybe coming to the board very soon in regards to looking at ways to address those RFI's.
Okay, thank you guys, thank you for the report.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to say um it's really nice to see this team together. I it's it, we've had big change in the construction area as well with uh with our business services. And I it's really nice to see everybody together, I think this is the first time now that we officially have this team together. Well, I think you've only been here now, what, a week?
A week and one day.
A week and one day and you're already up here presenting. I appreciate that you dove in um and Fonder Solari as well and um and just, you know, hit the ground running and really have been, you know, expending the time and commitment to our program, it's really evident already. Uh I appreciate Pro West for working with Fonder Solari and you know, change is hard, it's hard for all of us always. But I think that we have a bright future ahead of us, it is a new chapter. And I I think we have a really dedicated team, I wanna thank Ken Haas for helping to facilitate this change as well. It's just, I'm really excited about this team and I think we will have uh transparency and accountability. And I think that uh you have a really strong team and commitment to get us to the finish line and I'm I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you for this report. I do have one question, when will this report that the Fonder Solari construction report, I know that we got it as a, you know, as a interim more of a draft, but is that going to be attached to the agenda? How will we have that for the public to look at? I guess that's a question for Raphael.
Sorry, uh for the monthly report? Yeah, so we will be uh working, just fine tuning, uh we we had a bit of a draft on it. So we'll be fine tuning that and we'll be uh following the process of posting it on the website where we have our construction updates, so. And then we'd be posting these reports as well, uh like the one we presented tonight, on that same website, just to keep that uh going.
Right.
Um so it'll be available.
Right, so just as an estimate so the public knows when they can look to to find that because I.
Sure.
We did not have that attached to our agenda yet and.
Oh, okay, so the the report tonight, I'm sorry about that, I didn't realize it wasn't on the agenda. That will be uploaded like, I'd say tomorrow, by the latest sometime tomorrow.
Okay.
It's it's gonna be up. The other uh monthly report, that one, uh will most likely, I I think we're just fine tuning some things on that. I would say by the end of the week, we would have it.
Okay.
Ready to go.
That's terrific, I would say one thing when we revised our bylaws is that we really are striving to have all of our documents in our board meetings attached to the agenda when we post it. So in the future, I know this is our first one out and that we're, you know, Will's been here one week and one day, so. But I just wanna say to the public that we plan to have these reports attached in our board meeting uh agenda and that and that you will be able to tune into the meetings and then be able to access the report so that it's really transparent for everybody. But it's a really great report and I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna say thank you to Pro West for um, you know, making way for my entire team to come to El Rodeo. It was really exciting to be able to see, cause so so much of our work overlaps. And and to be able to, you know, in in Mr. Margot, you talked about the connectedness and our our principals were talking about connectedness. But to be able to stand back and watch, you know, Mr. Mead, uh looking at security, you know, height of cameras, but also working directly with the technology team about the locks and also with, you know, with with education services and with gosh, just everybody was there, Ken Haas and Tim and just be being able to listen to these conversations as we had a tour throughout the entire. I I just wish that people could have heard like the the conversations that were taking place. It was remarkable and everybody was really excited because we were able to kind of get in and still talk to Pro West and and ask questions. And 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 find out why things were placed the way that they were. So not only just to see the progress, but just to see how we all operate in our own individual responsibility areas and how that connects was definitely a highlight for me.
Right, I I think we're going to see the effect of the restructuring and the and how we've changed the reporting structure. Because I think it will now allow for greater collaboration in the process. And uh it will make you, it will make us more agile in making changes that we need in the field as we see programming needs changing or as things get highlighted to the extent that they can be. We will be able to uh be more current in in what we're we're building and what we're trying to deliver so that we have educational excellence. And I know we say that word a lot, but it's meaningful and it and all of these things are all pointing to educational excellence. So I think that um the restructuring and the change in the reporting structure and having these meetings and having uh our construction team come to the meetings and report and and as well having our staff out in the field is it's going to open this up in a very positive way. I think that uh we've shined, we've shined the light on it and I think that everybody is happy to see uh to see that. So thank you all, I really, really appreciate it and I look forward to this going forward. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Uh the next item on our agenda is board meeting reports. So I'll start with you, Mrs. Marcus.
I uh have to say that there were no meetings that I attended in the last uh two weeks. They either were canceled or they were not agendized, so I have no report at this time. But, oh, and also, uh the next two meetings that I had, the uh health and safest safeties uh meeting has been canceled as has, I believe, the next finance committee. So there probably may not be too many meetings over the next couple of weeks due to the high holidays.
Yes, I attended the Human Relations Commission and a couple of highlights from that meeting. First of all, we have um a new chair. Noel Freeman is now the Chair of the Human Relations Commission and of course, um the sad passing of Rota Sharp. Laura Margot has become the Vice Chair. Uh also, October is Civility Month and soon they will announce the Embrace Civility Award and that will be announced at City Council, very exciting, they have chosen and voted for that individual. Also, an initiative that the HRC is doing along with the city is to address homelessness. And I believe they have already worked to actively provide housing for three different individuals. Um and this is no easy or simple feat. And then finally, HRC is also continuing to look to fill the vacancy, um given that Rota Sharp um has passed away. So if you have an interest in uh applying or being a part of the HRC, you can certainly reach out to them, thank you.
President Wells and I attended the LAXA monthly meeting yesterday, I was uh surprised to see you show up there on Zoom. LAXA is trying to do a Zoom meeting and then a hybrid meeting, this one was all Zoom. And they had a speaker talking about um CBOC, the Bond Committee Effectiveness. And I just a couple of brief statistics I thought were were interesting, I'll share that before Prop thirty nine, which is the proposition that our two bonds are under, um there was a fifty five percent pass rate. And then after Prop thirty nine, it became eighty one percent pass rates because it lowered the percentage, obviously, of of uh voters needed to pass. Out of the thousands of districts in California, five hundred and ten currently have CBOCs. Out of the ninety three districts in LA County, seventy five have CBOCs. So LA is a lot more busy building than than the state as a whole. He stressed independence in CBOCs, um very important factor. And he asked two questions that he had a little breakout sessions. First question was, how do you know when a CBOC is effective? And the second one was, how do you know when a CBOC has successfully built public trust? So we got together in little groups, then brought it back to the discussion. Different things that were discussed is, you know, effectiveness is um onboarding new new CBOC members, accountability, transparency, projects getting completed, making sure bond money is spent properly on bond language issues, uh checking receipts and reports. How do you know if they successfully built public trust? CBOC is a known entity within the district, um they have bylaws and handbooks and they establish relationships with administrators and community members. He brought up, there's the California Association of Bond Oversight Committees, which is a statewide association to support uh CBOCs. And it deals with best practices and training and uh that's that's it, I'll keep it really brief, so. I think next uh next LAXA meeting, they're gonna discuss, it's in person in Downey, and they're gonna be discussing teacher shortages, which thankfully, we do not have one in our district, so.
Thank you, Noah. Dr. Breggy and I attended a meeting with Erica Felsenfeld and Wendy Nystrom and they are part of the city's uh sustain sustainability um group. And to talk about um at different programs that we can bring uh to our school district and partner with the city um around sustainability. And as well, uh we talked about doing a survey for our district as a starting place and to understand what is important to our school community, be it students and parents. And so we will work with them on that survey. The other thing that um as a follow up to that is that the city of Beverly Hills will be hosting a virtual workshop on September the twenty first at six PM and is to present the city's transition to a hundred percent renewable electricity through the Clean Power Alliance. And so um I encourage everybody that's interested to please uh attend that, it's a Zoom, so it's easy to to attend. And then um I think that's really the only other meeting, I I attended Rotary this week, we had it uh, you know, the last two weeks. And uh they have continued to reach out to us and want to continue to increase our partnership with the school district with Rotary. And um they're planning a toy drive, which I'll follow up with Rebecca and Dustin on on that. But they're really excited about um focusing on partnering with the school district. And I think it's a great, it's a great partnership, especially with all of the professionals that are involved and want to speak on our career day and um and talk about internships. So that's that's it for me for this week and um I don't, does anyone have any comments? Okay, I'm gonna move on. And the next item on our agenda is Ed Services. And then we have Mr. Seaman.
Good evening, Board of Education, uh this is a resolution that every year um in a public hearing just around sufficient uh instructional resources and materials. And so typically, it usually is around week eight for most school districts. We're confident and comfortable with bringing it to the board slightly early. So ultimately, I would hand it over uh to President Wells to actually read the public hearing statement, if that's okay.
Okay, the public hearing statement is the following, it's public hearing and approval of resolution number two zero two two dash two zero two three dash zero zero four, sufficiency of instructional materials. The public hearing on sufficiency of instructional materials is now open at eight oh one PM. The governing board of the of Beverly Hills Unified School District in compliance with the Education Code Section six zero one one nine is required to hold a public hearing on or before the eighth week with a week of school that certifies that each pupil in the district has sufficient textbooks or instructional materials in each subject area that are consistent with the content and cycles of the curriculum framework framework adopted by the State Board of Education. The public was invited to email their questions to Dustin Seaman. Mr. Seaman, have you received any questions or comments?
I have not.
The Board of Education has heard your comments and we thank you very much for your input. The public hearing is now closed at eight oh two PM.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we need an approval on this?
Yes, may I have a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve resolution number two zero two 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 zero two three zero zero four.
The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Dr. Stern. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Next, we have Business and Finance and we will hear from Mr. Guzman.
Thank you, uh President Wells, and uh good evening again. So item fourteen A is the approval of resolution for designation of district representative. This basically allows us to uh Dr. Breggy or myself to sign off on applications that we would file towards to the state in regards to uh funding for facilities programs, so facilities programs that we may apply for. It allows us to just go ahead and sign, um so that's why we would bring this uh designation of district representative.
Okay, thank you, may I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. The next item?
Next item is fourteen B, it's the approval of amendment number one to the MOU with the Los Angeles County Office of Education. This MOU pertains to the BEST Program. Essentially, our BEST Program is the Business Enhancement System Transformation, which basically updated PeopleSoft, which is our our previous financial system, to a much more robust upgraded version. And now um it also was supposed to update the HCM or the HRS, which was the payroll system, to the Human Capital Management System. Due to COVID and just some significant, some delays uh that were experienced uh with with COVID, that HCM component, or in other words, the payroll component of the BEST system implementation was not successful and it wasn't being able to implement uh on time, so now they're asking for this extension. And essentially, the option would be to um charge um the district a one time cost of a hundred and thirty one thousand two oh three eighty five. Or we could spread it out over three years and and pay one thirty eight, a hundred and thirty eight thousand, one hundred and nine and twenty eight. So essentially, you would have to approve either a one time payment of a hundred and thirty one thousand, which reflects a five percent uh decrease by doing that. Or a payment over three years of a hundred and thirty eight thousand, one oh nine twenty eight. The recommendation from from us would be to do the one time payment.
Thank you, may I have a motion for approval?
I will move for the approval of amendment number one to the memorandum of understanding with the Los Angeles County Office of Education.
With a one time payment? That's in there, right?
Yes, yes.
I have a question though.
Okay, motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Dr. Stern, go ahead, Rochelle.
Is this a hundred and thirty one thousand two hundred and three? Is this 131,203, uh, 203.85 in the budget at this time? Or is this going to be added? Is this something new?
This is something new that would have to be added to the budget. And, uh, it's not, just to clarify, it's not a Beverly Hills Unified School District thing. This is something that's happening to all, uh, districts that are part of Lego. Um, and there's some communication, you know, that was sent out by the superintendent, uh, Dr. Deborah Duarte regarding all of this. Um, and so it's just something that happened, you know, all across the county. Um, and many boards are, are adopting that resolution.
They're all being hit with the same problem that they're on, but they didn't have it budgeted and they now have to budget it.
That is correct. That was one of the, uh, main concerns. Uh, one of the things that Lego did was, uh, to issue a FAQ, uh, that, that answered some of the question as to why there was a delay and why it's needed, uh, to, to the different boards, uh, so that that's available to, to boards or, or community members or anyone else that would like to see. Um, but essentially it's not a, just a Beverly Hills thing. It's a countywide.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, so I had asked, um, well, I'd asked Dr. Breggy, but I assume Rafael answered the question. Um, what if we don't do this? Because you said many districts are adopting this, but not, I'm sure not all of them are adopting this. Um, and the answer to my understanding was that we kind of be left out in the cold with another system. Not sure what the cost of that other system would be, by the way. I'm not sure if we would even save any money on that or not. But, um, it seems that Lego did not really leave districts much of a choice in this matter. I'm sure that there may be some, either much larger districts that it's worth them investing in something else, or maybe they're much smaller districts. Um, so I did appreciate the response to that question. Um, the motion was made. Do we have to check off one of the options? Cause we made it with the one-time payment. Is that sufficient enough?
That, that would be sufficient if you authorize it with the one-time payment.
Okay.
Essentially, the, the option with the one-time payment, you would save 5% by doing it.
No, no, I'm saying technically it's option C in the resolution. So I don't know if that, if the wording of the motion qualifies for.
Okay.
Do we need to say?
Would we need to say option C is what I'm saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, uh, it, it sounds like it's more of an assessment than anything.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's, it's just, it, it happened district-wide. I know that, that there was, because, and it's understandable, you know, uh, they have to train people on using the new system. And, and even that with people being out of the office and working from home and all these, not, not this, not at this district, but countywide, it, it created kind of an issue for, for, for the implementation of this HCM system. Yes.
Okay. Um, did Michelle, did Rochelle make that motion? She did. She just left.
Pam is nodding.
Do we need her here to vote? Since she made the motion?
I just wanted to be clear, the minutes reflect that it's option C.
Yes.
We, we, we.
I said one-time payment.
You made the one-time. I just want to make sure for his covering here. Great, great. Do you want to just take the vote?
I'm okay with it.
It, it, I think it's fine.
We have the majority.
We do.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes three, two, zero, three, three to, yeah, three, zero, with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. It's a brain teaser for me. Um, okay, our next item?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I was gonna have him introduce it first.
Okay.
Uh, sure. This one is, uh, item 15A, the Award of Asphalt and Concrete Paving Project for the Beverly Hills High School Basketball Courts. This is basically for the basketball courts that are over closer towards the swim gym area. It's like up, you know, if you go a little higher, it's there. Um, and, and essentially the asphalt was chosen because it's, you know, as modernization happens, we didn't want to go with something that's very expensive at this time. Uh, so the asphalt was the best option and as well, it's, it's basketball. So they, they need a, they need a type of surface for that. And so this would help us to be able to, uh, fix that. There's some significant cracks, uh, damage to that area. So in order for our students to be able to play basketball, it would, it would need to be repaired.
I'll make a motion for the awarding of the asphalt and concrete paving project for the high school basketball courts.
Okay, any comments?
Just a quick question. Um, I noticed this is from the Deferred Maintenance Fund. Is it, was it budgeted in the deferred maintenance?
No, no, it was, it wasn't part of the Deferred Maintenance Fund. Uh, but there were some, uh, items that, there were some savings in some of that, uh, in the previous projects that this would be able to fit in.
Okay.
And we'd be able to, and that's why Ken mentioned in November, we'll be providing a update with the deferred maintenance, uh, plan.
Fabulous. Thank you, sir.
Dr. Stern?
I just want to say I am qualifyingly approving this in the sense that I know that, um, a larger need is just to have more green spaces and less concrete and pavement. However, this is for basketball and, um, I have seen it, the, the state of repair there is pretty severe. So it has to be repaired, but it's just a larger thought of, you know, looking for ways to diversify our hardscape.
Yes.
Maybe one day a putting green.
A putting green, yes.
Um, uh, I, I agree. I, I'm not sure what alternatives there are for asphalt for basketball courts, but I can see that there is an immediate need from a safety standpoint. Um, but I, I think we made this point at the last board meeting. And I, uh, so of course it's, it's always disappointing to see asphalt back on here this very next meeting, but I understand the need. So, um, but I, I know that we've, we've discussed it, this about our sustainability with our construction especially. So we look forward to seeing those alternatives going forward. Mrs. Marcus, did you have any questions? We are on item 15A, which is the Award of Asphalt and Concrete Paving Project for the High School Basketball Court.
Do we have much more choice in this particular case that desperately needs repair, correct? And I have not yet seen outdoors, uh, wooden basketball courts.
No, what outdoors wouldn't be that, that good of an idea?
Yeah, Alex said the courts are thrown off her game.
Okay, uh, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. I'm glad you're back, Rochelle. Uh, next item, Rafael?
Item 14B, this is for the approval of agreement with Air Handler Hazardous Material Consultant Clark Seif at Hawthorne Elementary School Building D. Essentially, I don't want to explain this because, uh, you know, there, there's an HVAC air handler located above the ceiling level of Hawthorne Elementary in Building D that is installed in a pretty tight space that's surrounded by asbestos-containing fireproofing material. Now, just, uh, we want to clarify that in order to access that unit, we have to have a consultant, write a scope of work, uh, to ensure that there's proper containment and safety precautions. I just want to clarify that this is not an asbestos abatement job. This is a mechanical repair that requires the setup of special containment in order to properly conduct the required services.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I will move for the approval of the agreement with the Air Handler Hazardous Material Consultant Clark Seif at the Hawthorne Elementary School Building D.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Mr. Margot. Any other comments? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Our next item is planning and facilities. Um, Mr. Guzman?
Yes.
16A?
Yes, so 16A is the approval of amendment number four to the agreement with RMA Group for Material Testing and Inspection Services at Beverly Hills High School Buildings B3 and B4. Uh, essentially, uh, as bond work is still underway and is anticipated to last through May 31 of 2023, an increase of, uh, 227,000, uh, for Building B3 and, uh, 119,000 for Building B4, for a total of about 346,000 is required. These additional funds are expected to cover the remainder of the project and all services will be done on a time and material basis.
May I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of amendment four to the agreement with RMA Group for Material Testing and Inspection Services.
I'll second. Motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by myself. Anybody have any questions?
Uh, just want to make a comment if I could.
Sure.
Originally, when I saw this, I was, uh, I questioned the, and I just want to point this out, that in the remainder of the contract under the, uh, Part A, you can actually see the amount of work that needs to be done, which I did not see originally and was going to actually have some concern, concern about it. But the amount of work that's going to be done is quite, uh, sufficient to probably warrant this. Uh, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus. Yes, and if you, if you open up the attachment right there on amendment number four, it like details the scope of each, uh, line, there's line items for amounts that.
That's what I was talking about, right?
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, was this included in the, in the budget for this portion of the work for B3, B4?
Um, that's not part of, of the budget. Um, so we'll have to make sure that it gets included.
Okay, so right now this is out of contingency?
Yes, we'd, we'd have to, we'd have to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Um, the next item?
Approval, the next item is item 16B, approval of amendment number one to the agreement with Leighton Consulting for Geotech, uh, Observation and Testing Services, um, at El Rodeo. Um, so the, uh, services were done, were to be done on a time and material basis, not to exceed 159,000. But as bond work is still underway and is anticipated to last through June of 2024, an increase of 91,603 is required. If you open the attachment, it will give you like the details of what specifically that is broken out, uh, for. And a lot of it has to do with soils technicians and geotechnical laboratory testing and all of that. So it's just needed in order for us to cover, uh, the remainder of the project through June of 2024.
May I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the amendment number one to the agreement with Leighton Consulting Incorporated for Geotechnical Observation and Testing Services at El Rodeo.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Mr. Margot. Any other comments, Mrs. Marcus?
The same question as that Mr. Margot had just a minute ago. Are these additional, uh, money from, for the bond? Uh, this 91,000, is it in addition to the original amount that was not budgeted?
Yes, it's, it's an increase. It's an amendment to that. Yes. And, and that's, I'm sorry, one more point of clarification there. As we, uh, finalize our, our budget, uh, analysis and everything, we'll be able to bring kind of, we'll include these in there and make sure that we have a, you know, all of this included and, and updated for you. So you can see like what's remaining with, with all of these items budgeted.
Thank you. Um, all right, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Mrs. Marcus, I mean, from Alex Bodden. The next item on our agenda is the, uh, approval of the strategic plan. May I have a motion?
I will move to approve the strategic plan.
And I will very happily second the motion.
The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Any other last minute comments? I think we've said it all.
Said it all, didn't know.
I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Our next item is public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay, next up, communication from the board members. Alex.
Um, all I have to say is I hope to see everyone at Friday's homecoming football game.
Mrs. Marcus?
Well, I would like to make a comment. I have something that I would like to say. Um, first of all, I would like to take this opportunity, uh, to, and talk about the, um, I'm very happy that Beverly Vista, the middle school, took the students to the beach, uh, Friday, the eighth grade, the next week, the seventh grade, and so on. I think that's a very, very, very nice thing to do. I think it did a lot to get the kids to get to know one another, maybe to pick up a little trash and so on and so forth. But I, I do have some comments about it and I'd like to make them at this time. Uh, my first comment about the fact is that I'm talking now as a teacher. I was a teacher for 55 years in the district and I know how this particular event would have occurred to me or how I would have felt about it. Um, I, I, um, I always felt very, very strongly about the students in my class that they had to miss any time from Mrs. Marcus's class. I just felt that I was very protective of every moment that I had them in my class. And I did not like to see them miss my class if they had to go, well, if they had to another, go to a concert or go to an auditorium program or whatever. I know I had no choice, but I always relished every minute that I could have with my students and didn't like to give it up. And, um, and so I, I really took exception to that, that a whole day was spent going to the beach to pick up trash. And I, I personally would have had a problem with that. The second thing that occurred to me was this was called a community service project. And to me, a community service project is one that is done on your own time. Maybe at lunchtime, maybe on Saturday, maybe on Sunday, if you wanted to go pick up trash. I mean, it's very wonderful that, that they went to pick up trash, but it was given community service on school time. So I had a little difficulty with that concept. And then, uh, there was one more thing that I wanted to say about this and that. Whenever, uh, a student, or whoever had a project, I always liked to feel that there was an educational component tied to it and that there was a reason for doing it. And so if this project, they, kids went out to pick up the trash, maybe they were given an assignment or they knew that they, coming back, they may have to write up a little report on it and make a, make an essay or do some kind of a, a project, uh, with the class or with whatever they could do. Maybe they were going to do a survey, what kind of project, what kind of trash there was and so on. But there was something educational about it. And as far as I know, from what I've heard, there was nothing really educational about it. There was nothing tied into it as being an educational type of, uh, uh, program. I remember I used to play activities with the kids in science and I would go, we had activities and they had strange names like, oh dear, or quick frozen critters. But every activity, and the kids loved them. They were having a great time. But there was something important in every lesson that they had to learn. And I really felt that in this particular, um, activity of going to the beach, I wondered what the kids came back with as an educational opportunity other than meeting, just being with friends, having a little fun and so on. So I, I, I think it's a wonderful thing to do. I'm, I'm glad that they went and so on. But I personally had some problems with the activity and with the field trip that they went on. And I guess I've said my piece.
Um, thank you, uh, everyone that stuck with us tonight, um, hanging in there. I appreciate it. Dustin, a special thank you for coming to my show the other week. I left you out and I, I've been guilted for that. Guilt resolved. And also, thank you, K-Bev. I always say it out the door, but I'm saying it today on camera and mic. Thank you guys and ladies and everybody for the wonderful work you do every time we sit here. Appreciate it.
Um, I just have one, uh, quick comment is that Alex and I were chosen for Team Beverly Hills. And so as well as one other student board member, and who's the other student?
Um, Giviam Chad, he's a friend of mine.
Yes, so I'm really excited about that. So you'll be hearing more about, um, our Team Beverly Hills experience, which is really exciting to be doing. So I'm looking forward to doing that. Thank you.
Uh, just a, a quick thank you again, uh, to our board for approving the strategic plan. And it, uh, I know Mr. Halimi isn't here, uh, this evening, um, uh, but he was really instrumental in, in many of the pieces in putting our strategic plan together. So I wanted to, uh, be sure that we reach out and we thank him as well.
Thank you for bringing that up. I would also like to thank Mr. Halimi for his, uh, commitment and his input into the strategic plan and our planning and the mission and vision statement. I think he was really instrumental in, um, in helping us, uh, as we approached this. So I'm sorry he's not here tonight for approving the strategic plan. So thank you for bringing that up. And if that is it, I will officially adjourn the meeting. It is 8:24. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We'll see you, uh, in two weeks. And have a nice holiday.
Uh, Happy Rosh Hashanah, LeShana Tovah to everybody.
Yes. Yes.